Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Dennis Townsend.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay, we're going to start with our Board of Supervisors matters, and we will begin today by going to my right, which is the only way I can go, but it's rare to go to my right and go to Supervisor Valero, who I see frantically writing, so Supervisor Valero.
Okay, I will turn on my mic, it's already on. Good morning to Tulare County. Last week and this week have been very busy. We held a town hall in Badger last week. It was well attended with about 25-plus residents. I am very thankful to our staff, who carve out time to directly connect with our community members and their concerns. Most concerns dealt with road conditions, the need for plowing during winter months, and additional safety patrol around the mountain community. Self-help enterprise held a very nice ribbon cutting for the Sequoia Commons grand opening, and residents at Sequoia Commons have to be between 30% and 50% of area median income. As mentioned previously, but worth repeating here, is that six of the 66 units are permanent supportive housing for people who have experienced homelessness in the past two years. And just to share too, that monthly net rents at the complex range from 331 to 766, and are based on both the unit and resident incomes. There is a great vision and great project happening in the community of Goshen. And I want to thank colleagues Supervisor Shucklian and Supervisor Crocker for also attending. I attended the Rotary event last week honoring Mayor Bob Link. Supervisor Shucklian did a great job on the mic roasting her colleague, and great laughs throughout the night. On Thursday, I was a guest speaker at the Lions Club in Dinuba. It was a great opportunity to listen to their concerns and share my first-year journey with them. I want to give a shout-out to Supervisor Vanderpoel, Jason Britt, and Mike Washam for taking time out of their schedule to meet with leadership northern Tulare County. I facilitate this year's class, and last Thursday, our day session was on local government, with an emphasis on economic development. So the LNTC group were able to learn about growth and development through the lens of the city of Dinuba, the city of Isalia, and Tulare County. I gave the CSAC workshop welcome to a group of about 40-plus participants, mostly from Tulare County, but a few from out-of-county as well. It's always great to see our staff taking advantage of educational enrichment opportunities to support their profession. And I want to thank Supervisor Shucklian for bringing this opportunity to Tulare County. Many times these workshops are held in bigger communities like Sacramento, San Diego, but our supervisor reached out to CSAC and brought those workshops here. I attended the TCAG meeting in Woodlake yesterday, along with my colleagues on this dais. And then this week, we have an art selection committee meeting, participating in fathering the Fatherless Summit Working Group. And then I'll be attending the Porterville District Office unveiling of the Live Health Online Kiosk tomorrow. And then I will then be meeting with Keller Wegley Consulting to continue to discuss our Easter Rose water issues. I will be hosting the Annual Seeds of Love event on Thursday, recognizing a few organizations in District 4. And then on Friday, I will be attending CSAT's Youth Development Monthly Meeting to give a welcome and participate in a training. And then in the evening, attending the Young Lives Banquet. For those of you that may not know what Young Lives is, it's an organization that works with teen moms throughout Tulare County. And then lastly, I will be helping out at Fire Station 4 in Cutler this Saturday, as Tulare County Fire and students participate in a landscaping project to beautify the corner of 63 and Avenue 408. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You know, it's kind of interesting, on the board that I first started working on in 2009, Board of Supervisors matters typically took the first five minutes of the meeting, but that was all five of us speaking, that was just you Supervisor Valero, thank you. That was, that was very thorough. I know, I know, that was quite thorough, Eddie, good job. All right, next, we're going to move on to Supervisor Crocker.
I think past board members weren't as busy as this board is, so I think that's a good testament for the work that's happening with all of us. I want to highlight a couple of things from the past, from a couple of weeks ago. I know I've mentioned town halls that I had hosted with, and staff had helped out, in Farmersville and Lindsay, and a couple of weeks ago, I wrapped up another town hall in Exeter. And the focus of those three town halls were really around senior centers. And so I really appreciate the District Attorney's Office, Health and Human Services, and specifically Adult Services, as well as having code enforcement and, and roads as really a highlight to focus on issues that many of our constituents have, but specifically services that we have for our seniors in the county. And KT AAA, which I've previously served on, and many of my colleagues currently serve on, is something that really helps to provide funding for the senior centers. And so we were able to go out to the three in our district, and District 1. And I thought they were all very helpful to the people that attended, and I really appreciate staff for making the time to be able to do that outreach, so thank you for that. Also, two weeks ago, the county, we hosted our first, we had our first-ever Veterans Advisory Committee meeting, and it was great to see the individuals that were there. We've got seven members, there's one per district, as well as two at-large members that are involved with veterans somehow in some capacity, whether an actual veteran or providing services to them. And it was great to just kind of talk about, being that it's a new committee, what the goals and the purposes of the committee were, election of officers, trying to facilitate how we move forward, looking at projects, and not just talking about things, but actually getting some work done and making sure we're providing additional services for our veterans. So I really appreciate staff, and I appreciate Health and Human Services Agency again for providing that staffing for the committee, for providing an analyst and making sure that we're all functioning very well as far as moving forward and making sure that we have a vibrant committee. And I think we have a tentative date next month for our next meeting, so more to come on that, but that was, it was a good first meeting that we had. This past week, Lindsay Hospital District, I attended their board meeting to swear in a new member, Richie Hernandez, and the, that, there was a new member there because unfortunately Teresa Hurtado had passed away due to cancer. And, and so it was, it was a time that Robert, her husband, was able to be honored by that board, and then also to have a nice young man be able to step up and serve his community in her spot. Last Wednesday, I had the honor of going to Bakersfield, and I know several of my colleagues also went to Bakersfield to see President Trump, and to hear what he's doing and his administration on the water issue and the waterfront, as far as advocating and making sure that we're getting more water in our area. Unfortunately, the state of California and the Attorney General's Office has sued that action, and so that's going to be working through the court system. So there won't be any immediate new water sources until that's resolved in the courts, but the federal government has done their part to try and get additional water for our communities. Last Thursday, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District had their governing board. That board meeting, the, the item of significance is we put, placed more money into an incentive program that helps to reduce ag burning. And so if you want to chip your, your grove, you want to chip your orchard, and then incorporate those chipping materials, the woody material into the soil, there's additional incentives for that. We started that program last year, it's had tremendous success. And, and so we're, we're trying to encourage more people to do that, so that there's less ag burning, and doing that in a way that's cost-effective to the farmers. So it's actually cheaper to do that than to burn, so it's a benefit for all. Last Thursday, also attended the Fresno State Student Union groundbreaking that Linda and Stuart Resnick have contributed $10 million towards building a new student union for Fresno State. And even though it's not in our community, it's, it's hugely important. Most of our, most of our young people go to Fresno State, and it's, it's a tremendous asset for our region. And it'll help to, to get more people involved, get them more educated, and help us create more jobs for our entire region. Friday, the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, we met, got good updates. We're still tracking in a very positive direction as far as Insurance Authority, and I was honored to be elected as president of that group for the upcoming year. Saturday, the Exeter Chamber of Commerce hosted their annual dinner, and we had some great awardees that we were able to recognize and honor. Monday, yesterday, as Supervisor Valero stated, TCAG had our monthly meeting, and there's some great progress on the Sustainable Corridors Committee that's, that's happening, that some of, that staff is, and some of our board members also serve on that, where the focus of that, and we're going to be looking at a measure, our amendment, to help fund those committees, but specifically to clean up our, our highways. That's the, the goal and the purpose, and trying to make sure that we look as great as possible for all the visitors, whether they're coming to the World Ag Expo that just passed, or the 2 million-plus visitors that go up to Sequoia National Park. But that we're, we're putting our best foot forward and making sure that we have great pride in our communities, and, and that our, our roadways and our highways are, are looking pristine, like so many other places. And with that, I think I'll save the rest for next week.
Supervisor Shucklian.
On here? Thank you. As Supervisor Valero mentioned, I too attended the ribbon cutting for the Sequoia Commons in Goshen, and look forward to the next phase of that, another 66 units that will be coming online. I did have the opportunity to roast my former colleague, Mayor Bob Link, so that was a lot of fun. Last Sunday, or the Sunday before last, I attended the dedication for the Private First Class Keith Williams Memorial Overpass. At, if you drive over the overpass there on the 198 at Acres, that has been dedicated to, to Keith, who of course gave the ultimate sacrifice during his time in Afghanistan. I spoke at the County Center Rotary last Tuesday. I gave an update on all that we are doing in the county, especially highlighting all that we are doing for the homelessness situation here. I then attended the Shaka Moody BBQ that they have every year, and thank you to UnderSher Sigley and our Ag Commissioner, they gave an update to a lot of the, the Walnut farmers that were there. I think they, they appreciate that very much. On Thursday, I was the emcee for the Training and Employment Association Conference that was held at the Wyndham, and there was a lot of good speakers, including our own Dr. Jason Britt. He hates when I say "doctor," that's why I say it. Today, after our meeting, this afternoon, I too will be attending our Art Selection Committee meeting, so I look, I look forward to adding some more public art to our space, especially this, the next space will be this one right here that we're in now. I'll then head off this afternoon to my Visalia Property Owners Association meeting. Tomorrow morning, Tulare County Economic Development Meeting, and then in the afternoon at 1:30 is our Task Force on Homelessness. Anybody is welcome to attend and hear what's going on there, and we meet just down the street at our Professional Development Center. Friday morning, I will be taking a pre-public tour of Eden House, which is the new 22-bed bridge housing facility for folks who are homeless or, and are in currently some type of case management. That is a collaboration with Self-Help Enterprises, the County of Tulare, the City of Isalia, and the City of Tulare. So looking forward to that coming onboard. And then I'll be heading to Porterville for the memorial service for Captain Ray Figueroa and firefighter Patrick Jones. And I just want to put, put a shout-out to Artillery County Fire Department and Chief Norman, who have endured a lot this last, this last week, and, and taking coverage and taking over for Porterville. And let's just keep them in our thoughts and prayers, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. Last, well back, I guess a week and a half ago or so, on the 13th, I was able to, to meet with Citizens for Energy Independence from Kern County, basically fighting for, against the state, I would say, to keep, to keep the oil flowing in, in Kern County. I also learned from, from, from Brandon Alley, who I see here this morning as well, good morning, also learned that we had a few, we have a few oil wells in Tulare County, even in, in the 5th District of Tulare County, something that I was not aware of. So that was very, a very nice informative time to spend with them, and to learn about getting onboard and helping them, because the issues that, that they're having there will affect our county, throughout our county and our state. So looking forward to getting onboard with that, with those issues. On the 14th, I gave a welcome to the Farm Worker Resource Fair over in Porterville. That was a really nice time, and I got to share a little bit of my experiences, of how, how our family came to, to California, and what their experiences were, and kind of compare that with what some of the farmworkers are experiencing today. And so that was a very interesting morning, got to share. I did it last year as well, and they invited me to come back next year, so I guess that was all okay. And, and then on the 14th, I just want, I want to encourage people to go and, and have dinner at Fugazi's in Porterville, that's now open at the Old Palace Hotel in, in Porterville. Been there a couple of times, was fortunate enough to go there on, on Valentine's as well. It's wonderful, and please come and support it, so it will be there for us whenever we're ready to go up there and have dinner. On the 18th, attended Congressman Nunes's Water Forum in Tulare at the International AgriCenter, along with Interior Secretary Bernhardt was also in attendance, and, and the CEO of the Friant Water Authority. And so that, just learning a little bit more about the, the biological opinion, releasing water south of the Delta, and a little bit of a rally, a little bit of a informational session there, in the lead-up to the President's visit on, on Wednesday. Of course, later on that evening, as has been mentioned a couple of times, we had the, the devastating library fire in Porterville. The, the loss of the facility, of course, was, was bad enough, devastating enough to the community, but then to lose Captain Figueroa and firefighter Jones was really a heart-wrenching thing for the community, continues to be as they memorialize those gentlemen this, this week up into Friday. And I too wanted to join, I, I went to the, I went down to the library, and by the time that I got there, of course, much of it was already taken care of. Chief Norman had called me to let me know, because it was in the district, that he was on the way over, and that he believed, that they believed there was someone trapped in the building at the time that he called, and then he called back to confirm that. And I went down and, and found he and many of his crews, and the sheriff and deputies down there. Jason Britt, our CAO, was, was down there already, and I had also called Andrew Lockman, our NOES was down there already. So we had a lot of people from Tulare County already mobilized there, so much so, they had already taken over operations at that point. And I was just very impressed to see, see them in action, and not only being very professional and taking over that situation, but also the compassion that they showed, literally getting down to the point of just going and hugging somebody, because there was nothing else to do, you know, at that point in time, which I did a lot of, because I couldn't do anything, because I was, I was essentially standing around. I was, I was asking Dr. Britt, you know, is there something I should be doing? Do I need to sign something? Do I need to give some sort of permission? She said, no, you know Supervisor, it's all, it's all taken care of. So very impressed with the emergency response, the professionalism, and the compassion of our whole team there. So a big shout-out to all of them. So it was a very emotional roller coaster this week, because, you know, starting, starting that way, and then the very next day, being invited to go to Bakersfield to, to see the President, to watch him sign the Record of Decision on that biological opinion. So that was a very, you know, very much an uptime, very much an honor to be there. Just an interesting little side note, he invited up onto the stage a young man who's a wrestler in Bakersfield, high school wrestler. Bakersfield always has been sort of a powerhouse in wrestling, and so the young man and his father came up on stage, and when he was done signing the opinion, turned right around and handed it to the young man. And I was very envious, because I was a wrestler back, way back in the day, and that would have been a lot, that would have been really great to receive something from the President of the United States, but... I should have wrestled him before, you're right. I'm probably not up to it at this point. But on the 20th, as Supervisor Crocker mentioned, we had our Sustainable Corridors meeting for the 65, 99, 198, and 190. And I was railroaded into, I mean, I was elected chair of the, of that committee. And so, and I am also excited about seeing how that's going to go, because it's definitely a committee that is moving forward already. It's not, it's not a meeting just to be a meeting, but we're actually going to start getting some things done, and that was reiterated yesterday at our TCAG meeting. Also, that evening, went to the Lincoln Dinner in Tulare at the International AgriCenter. And on the 21st, the city of Porterville put together a memorial for, again, for the firefighters, and many people came out at 4:14 in Porterville to Centennial Park to memorialize those, those firefighters. So that was really something to see. This week, as Supervisor Valero mentioned, I'll also be attending in Porterville HHSA, the Live Health Online Kiosk kickoff. I'll give a little bit of a, a welcome and a speech there. And then I have a Man Alive meeting. We have our event coming up at Porterville Nazarene Church, March 14th. Anybody that's would like to attend. And, and then, right after that, heading over to give a welcome speech for the Porterville Unified School District Cross-Pathway House groundbreaking. And that's where all of the pathway programs come together, and they're actually building a home. My company donated the plans for the home, and they're, they're going to, they're going to start putting that, that home up, and then they sell it to, to benefit the, the pathways programs in Porterville Unified. And then on Thursday is our Government Affairs Committee at Porterville Chamber. And on Friday, the firefighter memorial there at Porterville Nazarene Church. And I'm, I'm sure that will be a very fitting tribute. And with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much Supervisor. So a couple of public meetings that I wanted to highlight for anyone who's interested in attending. Tomorrow at 8:30 at the Tassaro Board Chambers, there will be a meeting of the Tulare County Employees Retirement Association Retirement Board at 8:30. In the afternoon, in Tulare at the Heritage Complex, there will be a meeting of the International AgriCenter Board of Directors at 4:00 PM. I serve on that board as an ex-officio member. There will be a First Five Commission meeting this Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning, right here in these chambers. And then later that evening, I know that we had an agenda item authorizing the expenditure of funds for some refreshments for the individuals in attendance at this event. County Council will be putting on, I think it's, what, Government 110 or something? And we started with Government 101, and tried to name the successive sessions, and never seems to work out, but it's a Government 101 forum, and I really do want to give County Council kudos for making that happen. I know that every year that it, it takes place, there's still a packed house, full of independently-elected board members who serve on special districts throughout this county that really do receive no training in their various positions, because their organizations can't typically afford to pay for that training for the various individuals. So I think it's a great thing that they put that together, and it will be well-attended again, I'm sure. That begins at 5 o'clock on Thursday. And then I too will be attending the firefighter memorial at the Porterville Nazarene Church. And I too just want to echo the comments of my colleagues in regards to the firefighters who paid the ultimate sacrifice. You know, I think it's an incredible thing when we can come together as a community to recognize individuals who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the safety of the common man, common woman in this county. And, you know, unfortunately, we did lose two of our own, but I think what it showed is how this community truly is a family, and we can come together and support one another. And I, I just want to thank our fire chief and all of the firefighter personnel from throughout the county, not only the men and women in our department, but from other allied agencies throughout the county, and even outside of the county. There were firefighters present, fighting that fight in Porterville. It was, was really incredible, and the fact that they would come in and take charge and let the Porterville firefighters take care of their own personal difficulties and counseling, and not having to worry about fighting the fires so that they could grieve, because there was so much allied support and inter-agency cooperation. I think it's, it's pretty amazing. So I want to thank Chief Norman and all the men and women who... Thank you, thank you, it's good, good timing for the dog barking. Thank all the men and women who risk their lives each and every day, not only in the fire department, but in law enforcement and other agencies to keep us safe. So I mean, I want to thank all of our veterans as well, who are out here, and the men and women, and the armed services for what they do as well. So that's all that I have for Board of Supervisors Matters. And now we will get back to our agenda, but prior to taking up Item 2, we do have an urgency item that I would like to look to council to discuss a process and detail for us on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has brought to our attention...
Is your microphone on, Deanne?
It says it's on.
Okay, good, just making sure. Mel might have turned your volume down.
Staff has brought to our attention that there is an item of some urgency, and they would like the board to take action on that, however, the item is not on the agenda. In order to address it, the board would need to vote that the item meets the statutory requirements for an urgency item. The board may then take, may add an urgent item to the agenda, and then may take action on the underlying item if these conditions are met. First, the board must publicly identify the item, and second, the board must vote to add that item to the agenda. In order to add the item to the agenda, the board must find two requirements have been met. One, that there is a need to take immediate action, and two, the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. The item here is as follows. The agenda for today's meeting was posted on February 20th of 2020, and after the agenda posted on February 21st, the county received notice that a rendering facility used by the county to process livestock carcasses is undergoing an unanticipated temporary closure. The county utilizes the services of Baker's Commodity, a waste management company with a rendering facility in Kermin, California, to process livestock carcasses. The Kermin facility is undergoing a temporary maintenance closure and has halted the processing of livestock carcasses. During this temporary maintenance closure, the facility will also be unable to pick up and take in any additional livestock. The closure is expected to last a minimum of seven to 14 days. Action needs to be taken today, because the inability to provide for the safe and orderly disposal of livestock carcasses poses a variety of public health risks, including, but not limited to, vector-borne disease and groundwater contamination. So the board would need to discuss and determine if these conditions have been met, and make a motion to add the item to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if any of my colleagues remember, but in previous years, especially during the summer, when temperatures are above triple digits, we have a tremendous amount of livestock that die in this county, and the facility in the past has become overwhelmed and unable to take any additional animal carcasses. And what this urgency item allows us to do is, for our producers and our livestock handlers throughout the county... throughout the county to dispose of animal carcasses and other onsite means such as composting, et cetera. So, I think that, given there's only one plant that accepts carcasses in, I think in the valley, it's a significant hardship in the industry. And I think that we have definitely met the need to declare this an emergency and an urgency item. So, any other comments from my colleagues? Supervisor Crocker?
Yes, just that I agree with you full-heartedly, and I would move to declare that this is an urgency item to place on our agenda.
To place, to place the item on the agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have added the urgency item to the agenda. And then now, we have to take up a separate item to declare this item an emergency.
So, I'd, if there isn't any staff comments, there's, I know that the dairy industry is looking for assistance. And as stated, we need to be able to provide something very quickly. I think there were, I'm talking with them this morning, there were 11 truckloads that Baker Commodities had to ship to Kettleman City landfill yesterday. So, it's, it's something that's, it's of huge significance that's happening right now. So, I would move to approve this urgency item.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Board, for entertaining that item. Next, we'll move away from animal carcasses and take up a proclamation honoring the League of Women Voters in its 100th anniversary. I will turn the microphone over to Supervisor Shucklian.
I can have Dale and the ladies up here. Hi, Miley, how are you? Hi, Dale.
What a sad boy.
Where's my purple-
I didn't pick the order of the agenda, sorry.
Well, let's get it. That's all right. I'll go ahead and start. Well, first of all, I'd like to honor the League of Women Voters here today to our meeting as we recognize the 100th anniversary of the pa- oh, thank you. Oh, hold on a second. Do I get a tiara too, or just?
No, this is not a tiara.
Thank you. No, I, I know that, I know that. So, as we celebrate the passage of the 19th Amendment allowing women to vote in the United States, I'm going to read the, I'm going to read the proclamation first. Whereas the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government by influencing public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas the League of Women Voters was formed in 1920 as an outgrowth of the movement to give women the right to vote following the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Since its inception, the League has helped millions of women and men become informed participants in government. And whereas in 1952, the Visalia League of Women Voters was officially recognized by the National League, and in 1970, the former name was changed to the League of Women Voters of Tulare County to reflect growing membership drawing from across Tulare County. And whereas today, the League of Women Voters has members in all 50 states and in over 800 communities nationwide. And whereas the League of Women Voters members work diligently to provide services to the public, including high school student voter education programs and voter registration, as well as providing countless college scholarships to local students. Whereas for years, the League has been instrumental in organizing nonpartisan candidate forums in partnership with many community, non-governmental organizations as part of their ongoing effort to continually educate the residents of Tulare County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize the centennial of the League of Women Voters and their dedicated work, both past and present, in addition to their service to the community and the role in engaging voters in democracy. And this is signed by Chairman Vanderpool and myself, Supervisor Crocker, Valero, and Townsend. So, it's just hard to believe that women have only been, had the right to vote for 100 years in our country when we're almost 250 years old. So, thank you to the League of Women Voters for Tulare County for all that you do. Dale, are you the president of the League? Okay, I would like to present this to you, and if you have anything to say, have at it. Yeah. It might be another 100 years before you get to say something up here, so.
I just quickly wanted to let you know, we greatly appreciate receiving this proclamation from the county and wanted to let you know why we're wearing white, and that was to show we meant business and that we're not just any, any group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Maybe, did you want to-
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's okay. You can wear whatever you want, it's been 100 years.
She wants us this way.
Which way? Shit, shit, shit. Oh, come on. Oh, come on, Dale. And this group means business.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations to the League of Women Voters. We will now move on to Item 3, which is a request to present a proclamation recognizing February 2020 as Black History Month in Tulare County. And to present this proclamation, I will now turn it over to Supervisor Valero.
As we mark the 44th year of National African American History Month, let us ponder the sacrifices, impacts, and contributions made by generations of African Americans. And let us be steadfast in our stride towards justice and equity. This month and throughout the year, let us think about dreaming, being, thinking, and believing a world that inspires us to love, learn, and lead through the struggles of and triumphs from the African American community. And with that, I'd like to bring up Brian Thornburn, who is the Government Affairs Director for Southern California Edison, and also participated in bringing this African American event to Southern California Edison, but also for Tulare County. And I will read the proclamation as stated. Recognizing the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in Tulare County. Whereas President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month in 1976, he called the public to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas since then, every American president has designated February as Black History Month. And whereas the President of the United States issued a proclamation honoring the Black History Month 2020 theme as African Americans and the Vote. And whereas the 2020 theme coincides with the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment, which gave African Americans a right to vote. It also is in honor of the centennial anniversary of the 19th century, or 19th Amendment, sorry, which granted women suffrage. And whereas the theme recognizes the fight for equality, representation, and respect that motivates us to continue working for a more promising, peaceful, and hopeful future for every American. And whereas at the local level, Southern California Edison celebrated at the 10th Annual Black History Month event, recognizing the organizations and companies who advanced the efforts and contributions of the African American community. And whereas this month, we joined the White House in celebrating the cultural heritage, diverse contributions, and unbreakable spirit of African Americans. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in Tulare County. Signed, February 25th, 2020, Chairman Pete Vanderpool, Kyler Crocker, Amy Shucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend.
Supervisor Valero, Chairman Vanderpool, and Board Members, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Southern California Edison, we appreciate this recognition. Last Friday was our 10th Annual Black History Month Celebration. We began the event with a moment of silence for the fallen firefighters in Porterville. It was our largest event ever with more than 300 in attendance, and we paid tribute to African American organizations throughout the region for their community partnership and energy leadership. And it was capped off by an inspiring keynote by Dr. Joseph Jones, who's president of the Fresno Pacific University. So, again, on behalf of Southern California Edison, our thanks and our continuing appreciation for the county's support and partnership. Thank you.
Appreciate all the work that Southern California Edison does. Okay, next, we're going to move on and take up Item Number 4, which is a request to recognize Sergeant Patrick Warner upon his retirement from the Tulare County Sheriff's Department for his many years of service.
And I, yes. And I will be presenting that plaque, but I know Sheriff Boudreaux would like to say a few words, so if you want to go ahead and come up, Sheriff, and say something, then I'll come down and, and give Sergeant Warner his plaque. Sergeant Warner has worked for the county from April 28th, 1986 until February 28th, 2020. You couldn't take that leap year day, could you, huh, Sergeant? You just had to, yeah, all right. Sheriff?
To the Chairman and Vice Chairman, good afternoon, and to the Board, or actually, good morning. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go sit with Sergeant Warner and his crew, and I've known Patrick a good long time. He's worked for the Sheriff's Office one year longer than I have. He's been here 34 years. So, we've done and had a lot, a lot of opportunities to work with each other through the course of that time. And Patrick's always one of those guys that you can put him anywhere at any time, and he performs like a professional, and we're really thankful for him. But one of the things that he said yesterday that I just found so inspiring is that in the Civil Division, you truly, and that's where he's assigned now, you really have to have a surgical way of doing things because it's so intricate in his design, not only administratively but legally. We have to make sure that someone's in there that really understands, and he's done a great job. We've had no complaints in that unit since he's been there. Being in the Civil Division with people getting very frustrated in regards to some type of civil action, that's quite the feat. And so, what I told him, and I complimented him yesterday, just saying, you know, Patrick, you've done such a great job. I'm really proud of you and all the work that you've done with, with zero complaints and, and really moving hard forward in such a good, positive work environment. And he says, you know, Sheriff, he says, "I love being here, but it's not me, it's my crew." And the first thing he did as a leader was thank his crew and took attention away from himself, and I was just so proud of that. And that really tells the kind of man that he is. The first compliments that he gave was to all of his staff, taking that recognition away from him. And because of that, I just felt it important today to be here and to be there here yesterday to recognize him because he's not going to do it for himself. So, compliments to Sergeant Warner, and congratulations on your retirement.
Trust you back here for some reason. Well, Sergeant, congratulations. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we want to thank you for your dedicated years of service to Tulare County and to the Sheriff's Department. So, congratulations. And, you know, I got a sash. I don't know, do I get a badge or anything from you guys? No, no.
Can I get the sash?
You can have the sash, absolutely. So, congratulations and thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who knew that 40 years ago, when you and I worked together, that-
We did?
Yes. Sears.
I was just like five years old. How could I have? There are 40 years ago.
Well, you were, you were a young starter.
Yes.
Who knew we'd be standing here? Tulare County's been my home for the last 34 years. It's, I started this with the hopes that I would at least, here, I'm going to break up. Then I would at least touch the life of at least one person. And if I did that, then I will have been successful. I, I think over the years, I've touched more than one. I want to thank the Sheriff and the Sheriff's Department, especially the Board, for allowing me to be here all this time. And on that note, I think I'm going to start growing my beard.
What's the problem? You've worked 40 years, my red.
You were in sporting days, you're not in pain.
Yeah, I was. Oh, this is very cool. All right, congratulations again, and I think we're going to do the photo op. But you're retiring and Sears is closing, so. What happened when we left?
Let's turn that beautiful crop around. There you go.
Right.
Congratulations, Sergeant, and thank you for your service, and best of luck in your 34 years is one year less than I've been alive.
Yeah, I was waiting for that one.
Make that, make that comment, too. Congratulations again. All right, now, we're going to move on and take up Item 5 on our calendar, which is Public Comments. I have a couple of requests in front of me at this time. First, I have Romelia Castillo. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Romelia Castillo, and I live at 12589 Avenue 416 in Orozco. Thank you for having me here this morning. The reason I am here, I'm here to represent the Western Region of Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Dinuba. You know, how many of you have been here since 2010? Okay, you're new. So, let me give you a little, real fast. In 2010, I came to the Board of Supervisors because I had gone to Washington, D.C. to meet with the President's Cabinet for 10 days. And I happened to, my husband took me to go see the Vietnam Memorial Wall. I had no idea what it was. When I touched that wall, something just went in my soul. And I came back to California, and the wall came to Tulare Veterans Memorial Hall, and I touched a wall, and it's, the same thing, feeling came again. So, I asked, "Who brought this wall?" And they said, "The Commander." Our President at that time was Martin Garcia, a big giant, a heart of a man. He gave me all the directions, numbers. And then I brought the wall to the Leadbetter Park in Cutler for six days. It was called the Traveling Wall. In 2014, the company called me and says, "Miss Castillo, would you like to buy the wall?" And I said, "How much is the wall?" "350,000." That blew me away. "300,000, there's no way." "You did it before, yeah, but it was 12,000 for a week." So, my husband's, "You could do anything you set your mind to." So, I'm a member of the Vietnam Veterans of Dinuba Post 643. I went to them, they said, "Go for it." So, the American Legion took me under their wings, and we raised the money. We had, we had to raise 177,000. We ended up raising 200,000, that's what it cost. Last April 30th, we paved the wall off. Right after that, the veterans took the wall down, and now we're beautifying it. That's phase two. So, what we're doing right now, you have the paperwork that we gave you. A veteran will come and walk you through those pictures. I'm here because we need financial help. In four years, we were able to raise $200,000 to paint the wall. Now, we need like $20,000 to finish beautifying it because the cement is very expensive. We did half of the cement, and now we're going to do the other part of the cement, put the artificial grass in the palm trees, and beautify it. This is a legacy for my veterans friends. I am not a veteran. My brothers were veterans, my sons are veterans, so that's why I'm here today because it's very important. Some of these men behind me were seniors when they got drafted, the day, some of them were pulled out to go for training the day after graduation. So young, so naive. Back then, kids didn't use guns. It was fistfights. Now, they put guns everywhere. It was fistfights, now they put guns everywhere. So that's why this has been a goal and a mission that we've had. I started with 12 members in the committee, right now we have 14. These members, you're going to see their pictures, they've been working very hard digging. And these veterans run from 70 to 84 years old because we have no money to pay a contractor, although we have a contractor that's showing them what to do step by step with no charge. So I'm here to ask the five of you, not just Eddie Valero, who said he's going to give us the money from the good works, but I'm asking all of you five to donate money. The past supervisors donated on 2010, when I brought the wall to Leadbetter Park. On 2014, I came before the Board then, and they donated money for the wall that we paid off now. And today, I'm here with a delegate of veterans to ask financial help and support so we could complete this beautification on Phase Two. And I know that the beautification of money for good works is for education and health. Well, you know, Phase Three is going to be about educating our youth what the Vietnam War was, because those are the grandparents of the kids now, and that is very important. And I'm going to change here to come and ask you for that financial support. And I'm going to ask Ray Quintana to come up and walk you through the pictures that you're going to be seeing. Thank you so much.
Wow, she took away everything I was going to say. Well anyways, my name is Ray Quintana, thank you very much for having me here today, and I'm a committee member of the wall. And right now, we're in our second phase, as Romelia said, and I have a portfolio here of some of the work that we've been doing. You know, we've been out there working hard, you know, and for 70 to 80-year-old guys, you know, we're still chucking out there. But anyways, we're here for your support and supporting our veterans, you know. We, I was 18 years old when I was in Vietnam. I did two tours there, and I'm proud to be a Vietnam veteran. And my fellow vets here that have come here to support us, I thank them for being here, and I thank you Supervisors for hearing me out today. And we desperately need your support to finish our project, our mission that we've done for four years now. We meet every Monday, and we've been working on the wall every three or four days a week, you know. It's a lot of work, but you know, it's something that we want to do, and we love, and we want to honor our fellow brothers and sisters that didn't, that paid the ultimate price and didn't make it home. And so, I'm asking you step up, step up to the plate and be there for us, for us veterans and all the veterans in the future. And I want to thank you very, very, very much. Where anyways, we're about $20,000 short to complete our goal, and it's going to be a historical event for Tulare County. You know, it's the only wall in the western part of the United States, a permanent wall. And this wall is here there to educate, to heal, and to, and for those who can't make it to Washington DC, they can come to Dinuba and see the beautiful wall there. I mean, it's going to look beautiful. We already have, it's going to be raised two feet off the ground in the foundation, and it's going to be first class, and we're proud to have it here in Dinuba and Tulare County. So Tulare County can be proud to have this wall, the only wall in the western part of the United States. So thank you so much. Thank you.
I have a request from Mary Bryant. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Mary Bryant, the Real Mooney Grove Project Incorporated. I'm at 1920 South Tipton Avenue here in Visalia. On behalf of the Board of Directors, I just wanted to let you know kind of what we are working on for the park. As you go, I'm here, Mooney Grove is our number one priority, Cutler Park is going to be number two. Cutler Park is a horrible mess also. Anyway, what we've been working on, we've already taken over maintenance of the Veterans' Memorial at Mooney Grove on a weekly basis. We've attended the Parks Advisory Committee, and we are working on coming up with an idea that is consistent with other parks that have ponds and lagoons for a series of waterfall-type system that's going to go on the islands out on the park, just to keep the water clean. And Roding Park, other places like this have systems like this. We're working on, of course, low, cost-effective and low maintenance is what we're working on, and then stuff that's not going to have to take a lot of time and a lot of money. So the lagoon absolutely is going to have to be drained and cleaned out. It's been 20 years since it's been done. It used to be done about every five years. The water is bad, it smells. I've been there several times the last, several weeks to take measurements for what we are working on. The goose poop is just horrible. I don't know what the park workers are doing. I'm not here to focus on that today, but I hear all the complaints, the goose poop, the lagoon's got to be done, okay, and within the next year or so, I would say. We have identified six major sites on the sidewalks around the lagoon that is a safety hazard. These are major, major things at Mooney Grove. We went out over the weekend to take measurements. Some of the sections, we're going to have to either rip out or fill in, are 31 feet long around the lagoon. This has got to be done. It's got to be done. So, we're working on perhaps bringing Symphony back to the park. On the North Island, there is electrical outlets, so we may be able to get something going on there, to bring people back to the park, to make it, Mooney Grove to where it's functioning and profitable. We're also going to be submitting to the Parks Advisory Committee our recommendation for repairs for the bridge. The bridge's in bad condition too. It needs to be painted. This is the 100th anniversary of the bridge at the park. So, we want to, we want to get that done before the end of the year and have maybe another rededication ceremony for the bridge and to honor, and it was a veteran who did design, came home from World War I, his first job with Tulare County was designing the bridge at Mooney Grove. So, and to honor him and the veterans, we want to get it fixed this year to honor the 100th anniversary, okay? We want to get started on doing some stuff also at Cutler Park. We have, we requested a special Parks Advisory Committee meeting, push some of these things through because we can't wait four months for the Parks Advisory Committee. We want to get going on this stuff now. We requested three weeks ago, a rowboat, go over to the islands, we've got to take some measurements. We've got to see if that electrical over there is working. We still don't have approval for that, we don't have approval for that yet. We haven't gotten approval yet to have a special Parks Advisory Committee. We want to start pushing these things through a little bit faster. So, with that being said, I'm having an event out at the park, Easter Sunday, we're going to have a barbecue, we're recreating what happened April 12, the same exact date in 1936. They had a sunrise Easter service, they had egg hunts for the kids, they had 5,000 kids show up. Hopefully, we won't have that many show up. And so I invite you all to come, and we just kind of wanted to let you know what's going on. Once again, we, we need something done with the park workers at the park. The park, the poop has to be cleaned off. I've been out there several times last week, it hasn't been cleaned at all. And it's supposed to be done every day. There was trash, there were plastic bottles in the...
Can you please wrap it up, Mary? I've given you an extra minute, would you wrap it up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I know Supervisor Shucklian had a comment as well from Parks Advisory.
Yeah, just from the Parks Advisory Committee, you mentioned about the sidewalks. We're, I think you were at that meeting when we talked about, we are currently waiting to hear about a grant that we applied for, a non-competitive grant, and that is going to be the focus of those, that funding, is to fix that pathway around the lagoon. And we've also been in talks for quite some time and have a tentative date, I don't want to share just yet, for the Symphony to be doing something out at the park, so yeah.
Okay.
We've got a lot going on.
We're not going to go back and forth. If you want to talk to her afterwards, you can.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any additional public comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period. We do have 9:30 timed items, but I would like to take up the consent calendar real quick so that our various departments can get back to their work if they would like. Any issues or items for correction to be pulled from consent from Board members? Members of the public? Alright, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Alright, I have a motion from Supervisor Shucklian. A second by Supervisor Townsend, please vote. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now take up our 9:30 timed item. Item number six is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to deny the appeal filed by Juliana Seligman et al. Mr. Bach?
Chairman Vanderpoel.
You should get your doctor, so I can call you Dr. Bach.
I'm good. I can't take on any more debt.
Okay.
Thank you. Chairman Vanderpoel, Supervisors, Dr. Britt, Dan Peterson, County Council. I am Aaron Bach. I am the Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency, and before you today is the appeal of a special use permit. PSP 19-019 Redwood Ranch, it's for assemblages and guest ranch. And I am going to quickly hand out two letters we received at 2:30 this morning to make sure the record is complete. So, by way of overview, the property is located at 48808 South Fork Drive, approximately eight miles east of Three Rivers, and outside the Three Rivers Urban Development Boundary on a 2.5 acre. Includes constructed facilities on a 190-acre property. The request is by the Redwood Ranch, and it's for the assemblages of people use permit for a wedding venue, a guest ranch, and private campground. It contains a 2,184 square foot barn that was permitted and legally converted to a residence and is currently being used as a vacation rental, subject to TOT. For the owner's non-commercial use, there are 368-foot square cabins and two single-family residences. PSP 19-019 was approved by the Planning Commission through Resolution 9691, which limits Redwood Ranch's assemblages of people to 12 weekend events per year and a maximum of 250 attendees. Two employees work on the site, a ranch manager is present on the site during events, and is available by phone, and events take place primarily on weekends between 10 and 11. There are over 70 conditions that have been included for this project, and the appellant's are appealing on the application of the use within the Foothill Growth Management Plan under the AF Zone and the categorical exemption. So as you can see from this map, it's over eight miles away from the edge of the Three Rivers community. It's on 190-acre property. This was a Google shot, so you can see the distance from other residences, and there was, brought up at the last minute, the Planning Commission, the Coia-Bordea Preserve, which is across the roadway, which is about .15 miles away. So, all of these things are a little bit of a distance away, and all the assemblage ordinance requires is a 300-foot buffer from the property line in order to minimize impact. You can see both up and down, the valley there, that there are obstructions to a lot of the views into the site, that was mentioned by some of the letters. But nonetheless, we received the letters regardless, but again, the 300-foot buffer is a requirement from the ordinance. So there are existing facilities, all these facilities exist, they're not asking to expand any of the facilities. You can see that it meets the 300-foot setback. The project includes a domestic hard rock water well existing, five fire suppression water storage tanks existing, two fire hydrants, laundry room, shop building, two septic leach line systems, two propane tanks, there's parking areas for 35 vehicles or 50 if LAs are hired. Redwood Ranch has six guest rooms and one residence, barn house, and up to 100 overnight guests would be allowed with the use permit, 20 inside the barn with 80 campers. And this project has not been publicized as a public campground, so it's all affiliated with the venue. Portable toilets would be brought in for more than 25 overnight guests or assemblage attendees. And I also want to mention if there are 100 attendees that they use shuttles to keep that trip count down. So here are some views of the site. As you can see, the, the entryway is not heavily lighted, the barn and the general events are held way outside of that 300-foot buffer. And generally, from what we've seen, as far as the average events and the lighting, is not outside of the allowances of our use permit requirements. Here are more side photos, this is where the fire pit was located. As you can see, it's centrally located and surrounded by gravel. So the Planning Commission decision occurred on December 11th, 2019. They approved the Redwood Ranch use permit, adding findings and conditions, including limiting noise to 60 dBs, our standard is 65, and that was actually offered by the applicant. Avoiding any potential, and that's at the property line, avoiding any potential ground disturbance impact by requiring camping only in the parking area, limiting events to between 10 and 11, giving RMA a calendar of events for the year, requiring posting of events to the neighbor and RMA 10 days prior to each event, allowing RMA onsite to inspect events as they occur, requiring a fire department safety and evacuation plan, require, say, a fire department-approved safety and evacuation plan, requiring cultural, if there is any ground disturbance, and biological surveys to be conducted before the first 2020 event, and finding that the permit is only for these 12 events and do not consider any additional events under this use permit. Furthermore, the events will not create car trip strength during peak hours that exceed the county 100 trip thresholds. A shuttle service is required for weddings with more than 100 invited guests to reduce trips on South Fork Drive. The site is within the state responsibility area that was noted in the findings of the staff report and the use permit itself. Open wood-fueled fire areas are allowed only in the county-inspected fire pit in the center of the gravel parking lot in months with low fire risks and not during the cowfire-declared fire season, whichever is longer. The county fire department advised Redwood Ranch on fire safety and emergency evacuation plans at the inception of this project, and the existing and future septic systems are subject to the local agency management program as approved by this Board of Supervisors. So there were some questions about general plan and zoning consistency, what the Foothill Growth Management actually says. The subject site is located outside any urban development boundary and is subject to the Foothill Growth Management Plan where applicable with a land use designation of foothill agriculture. To be clear, the development corridor guidelines were used for the creation of development corridors, not to regulate use permits in the FGMP. The FGMP and the general plan allow a guest ranch or summer camps and an assemblage of persons for educational and entertainment purposes with a conditionally-approved special use permit. Section 10.3 is very clear, AF Zone states use permits allow guest ranches as well as camping, lodging, and asphalt patch plants, and the AF Zone is clearly within the designation of agriculture, foothill agriculture. Section 16, our special use permit section, clearly says assemblages of people for entertainment purposes in the AF Zone. And other agricultural zones shall include but shall not be limited to agritourism, company retreats and picnics, and special events or celebrations such as weddings. The zoning ordinance is very clear. And there's some other definitions that raise some questions by people in opposition to this project. Other general plan policies that are relevant and do include economic development element policies, the county shall support the development of visitor-serving attractions, the development of recreational activities, that includes the development of recreational activities along the Coia River. ERM 5.9 encourages private interest to establish new commercial recreational opportunities such as destination resorts, which would be much greater and grander than a simple use permit. Land use element policy LU 4.4, travel-oriented tourist commercial uses provides exceptions for resort or retreat-related developments. And I do want to distinguish this is not a resort, but would be more in line with the retreat-related developments. Section 10.3D8, guest ranch or summer camp are permitted, less intensive uses. More intensive permitted uses are listed under Section D under 10.3 than guest ranches, but as far as guest ranches are defined as buildings and premises offering recreational facilities for such pursuits as horseback riding, swimming, and hiking with living and dining accommodations. All that clearly is spelled out as for this use permit. The county met its burden... The county met its burden in addressing the special use permits because Section 16V has its own board-approved ordinance 3416, which includes conditions that were used for this project. In addition, the Planning Commission and staff has added conditions to this project based on the letters in opposition to the project. So that, but the ordinance itself and with the Planning Commission requirements is clearly consistent with the general plan and zoning and for the health, safety, and welfare considerations of the county. So under SEQA, the opposition is also questioning the categorical exemption. So some of the findings for the categorical exemption were it did not exceed our 100 peak trip threshold of our general plan because there was about seven to eight peak hour trips. Most trips take place on weekends before 10:00 and after 10:00, which are not peak traffic hours. A condition of approval required shuttle service for events with more than 100 invited guests, which greatly limits the peak vehicle trips per event. The California Historical Resource Information System, we look at for these projects, and it's date, the actual research was conducted on July 23, 2019. The results letter stated there have been no previous cultural resources studies conducted within the project area, no recorded cultural resources. At California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Cuiabro Dia Ecological Preserve is located north of the project and approximately 1,000 feet from any active area of the site. No additional construction is allowed by this use permit. Camping is regulated to the parking area. Furthermore, under SEQA, the Planning Commission found the project will not have a significant effect on the environment as an existing assemblages and guest ranch facility and has been determined to be a categorically exempt because the activity will have no increase to the existing SEQA baseline, which is consistent with SEQA for Section 15301 Class 1 existing facilities. The project description is accurate and no new construction is being proposed. There is no piecemealing and there are no future additional events suggested as part of the project because a previous proposed variance has been withdrawn. As such, it is not considered part of the proposed project. There are no cumulative impacts as another project in the area does not create a cumulative effect by itself and just because it exists. And any surrounding activities do not exceed any SEQA thresholds of significance, hence the project qualifies again for a Class 1 categorical exemption. The project will not result in significant impacts and will not require additional public services or mitigation measures. There are more than 70 conditions of approvals that would apply to this project that would avoid, minimize, or eliminate potential impacts below thresholds of significant, and most have been added just because of the neighbors' concerns. In response to the appellant's, that was the Planning Commission's findings, in response to the appellant's themselves, the Planning Commission has consistently followed the Board's guidance in approving assemblages under ordinance number 3416 throughout the county. The Board found the ordinance consistent with the AF Zone and general plan FGMP when adopted in 2010. The Board only made considerations for RVLP and not FGMP in that ordinance, i.e. that one of these types of events in the foothills. Section 10.3 and Section 16V both allow both guest ranches and assemblages in the AF Zone with approved use permits. In regards to zoning, they did bring up the general plan under the heading of zoning. Policy 4.b2 was a policy to require noise studies and noise parameters for CNEL, which is a noise study over a 24-hour period, looking at average dBs. For large-scale projects, i.e. for new freeways, airports, industrial facilities, the assemblage ordinance's 65DBA at property line itself was a form of implementation of this overall, overarching general plan policy. The use permit meets the minimum acreage of 40, minimum acreage requirements of 40 acres as 190 acre property. The enforcement policies were also a question. RMA has consistently enforced its ordinances where it sees a violation of the law that results in harm to health and safety. No conclusive evidence of harm were found by any of the reports as far as noise or traffic or the events themselves, as the fire inspectors and sheriffs did not document any violations. So we are consistent on our enforcement policies across the county. Per county ordinance number 3493, the planning director has the discretion to immediately abate a violation that creates an immediate danger to the health and safety of persons or property. Again, we did not find any in the record. And since we did the temporary permits, none have been verified or documented as a single violation. The evidence provided consists of no expert evidence so far, and attorney is not an expert in regards to noise or traffic, and their evidence consists of mostly downloaded individual users or the facility's Facebook posts. That's pretty much tantamount to all the evidence that was provided are the Facebook posts. Under the temporary permit for Redwood Ranch, the county staff has been monitoring. The site has not been found to be in violation of any of its conditions. With monitoring and compliance, with the monitoring and compliance plan for the Redwood Ranch, as we collaborated and worked through with the Planning Commission with the calendar and 10 days notice plus RMA inspections of the events, the adequacy of the performance of the conditions can be monitored for their sufficiency, and this is very similar to what we did with the Lions Club, and that has worked out very, very well so far. So then there was some questions about some interactions between the county staff, fire department, and the applicant as far as false claims or prejudicial error in the Planning Commission findings. The staff has met previously with the Fire Inspector John Meyer of the Tulare County Fire Department and discussed the project and corroborated with Mr. Cantarosis, the project managers. So they had some preliminary discussions about what they should do for fire as the project was just getting started. First of all, this conversation is memorialized in the findings 41 and 42 of the Planning Commission's resolution and conditions of approval, 23 of the PC resolution. So not only was that discussion had, it was memorialized in our Planning Commission findings. The fire department recommendations are typically standard and are part of the record as conditions of approval 19 through 27 in the resolution. So that discussion with John Meyer was addition, in addition to standard conditions. The fire department recognizes the subject site is in the state responsibility area and a very high fire severity zone is finding 41 in condition of approval number 24. The CAO, the conditions of approvals includes annual fire department inspections under condition of approval number 19. This is not considered a development under the local hazard mitigation plan, so the levels 1 through 4 of the FGMP response times were for the development corridors themselves and their locations, not for every project in the county and are irrelevant and inapplicable to this use permit. The record reflects that there are findings in the staff report and resolution that show enough substantial evidence of the conversion metrics, zoning standards, and rectification of the disparity between the resolution, the ordinance, and the note that Mr. Myers was said to have made to Mr. Cantarosis's field observations to justify allowing up to 250 people, even if the note suggested only 150. The fire department did not require limiting the project in any of their standard conditions. So then there's a question about the accurate project description. The accurate project description is not what is in the application. It is, the project does change through the time of the application to the time of the Planning Commission's decision. In fact, we're making conditions up to the very end in defining the project, and all it did was limit the project. It didn't expand upon it. So there was also a question about, you know, enough time to look at the project. Well, the project didn't really change from the time the 10-day notice went out of the Planning Commission hearing. That's usually what the project is, not necessarily what's in the application, especially for SEQA purposes. SEQA requires that the SEQA document consider the whole of the project that was processed and approved by the Planning Commission. The project is as accurately described in the resolution as made by the conditions and findings by staff and the Planning Commission. The general plan, the 24-hour average DBA or CNEL analysis is not required for assemblages as discussed. There was a question again about the project's accuracy, if the general plan policy required a CNEL. Again, that's for freeways, airports, et cetera, not for assemblages. The project is whole if there is no outstanding parts. More, it's more, it has to be more than a mere thought to be a project. So there are no future phases or subsequent approvals as part of this approval for the PSP 19-019, as there is no application or staff processing of a potential future project being reviewed at this time. There is an existing facility. The existing facility rule does apply, Section 15301 exemption. There is no substantial evidence put in the record by appellant to contradict this fact. Without verification of proof of expertise or verification of any unusual circumstances received in testimony that were different from any other existing wedding venues in the county or any expert evidence showing unusual impacts, the record shows the existing facility rule is not upset by the unusual circumstances. And I would want to enter into the record at this point. A letter that we did receive from appellant's attorney, and basically, they, it was a traffic report done by an engineer who did look at the safety concerns of the appellant. Obviously, they used, there was no graphic representations of what they used for pictures or videos or anything. So I, it was suggested that they did use some of our Planning Commission documentation as far as the width of the roadway with, right outside the roadway is up to 14 feet. And then it brought up the whole issue of line of sight. Line of sight itself, as you can see from a map I made there, at the project entry is over 300 feet one way and probably upwards 400, 500 feet going the other way. But they did bring up line of sight along that whole roadway as an issue that didn't meet our county standard. So that was the whole of the argument. Outside of that, they brought up that because of the unusual amount of traffic on this project that they would suggest a traffic study. Again, they didn't bring up our 100-trip thresholds or the fact that we did look through what the trip would be generated from this project or the conditions we put upon the project. So it's a little cursory in the analysis. We do not believe that creates any fair argument at this time without more. There are no cumulative impacts from two use permits, as we said before, just because there's evidence of another project. If that project itself didn't exceed any thresholds and jointly does not exceed any thresholds with this project, there is no secondary project for cumulative analysis. There's no significant adverse impact because there was no unusual circumstances. Again, there's many variations on the same arguments used by appellant, and we answered them all. The fire safety zone is consistent across the area for the existing usance, and it's not an unusual factor. The county has several assemblages in the Williamson Act lands. The subject property is still being used for animal husbandry. Again, not an unusual circumstance. The Environmental Health Division found the septic tanks compatible with the use, so this is not an unusual circumstance. There is and there continues to be no fair argument made, as stated before, because of the potential for fire and traffic safety, as highlighted in my response to that letter, without any facts associated with the testimony. Staff considers evidence as represented by SEQA's guidance. None of the SEQA resource thresholds of significance were even approached by this project, much less enough for anyone to raise a fair argument or to require an environmental impact report. Substantial evidence shall include facts, reasonable assumptions predicated upon fact, and expert opinion supported by fact. Again, the expert opinion of that engineer in our opinion is not supported by fact. No mitigation required because no significant impacts. The standard conditions avoid impacts. Added conditions or measures or non-standard conditions are compromises for the benefit of the community and are not nor should be construed to be mitigation. I want to make that point one more time. We added conditions because of the neighbor's concerns, not necessarily to reduce impacts. Incidentally, it does. Regardless, there's no significant impacts that require mitigation. So this is the affirmative statement of due process of law, not abridging constitutional property rights, concurrence of the use of the Planning Commission's police powers, and procedural adequacy. I could read this to you, but I think it's also in the document. So it's, the Board affirmatively states that the project is compliant with the county's general plan. The Board states the Boards and Planning Commission's land use authority and responsibilities were fully utilized. I'll skip down here a little bit. The Board states that the project is in compliance of all the general plan and zoning code and procedural policies, as stated in the staff report, Planning Commission resolution, and the Board's findings. These include all the policies under the 2012 general plan, special use permit for an assemblage of persons and associated guest ranch for short-term rental and onsite venue camping, and as provided in Section 10.316V of said ordinance number 352, and as provided in Section 65905 of the Government Code of the State of California and the Code Enforcement Policies and Procedures of Tulare County. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions for me or other staff who are here, we are definitely here to answer. Otherwise, the applicant and the appellant, the attorney, look like they are present.
Thank you for that presentation, Aaron. That was almost as long as Board of Supervisors matters. Any questions for staff from Board members? Supervisor Townsend?
Oops. There it is. Okay. Aaron, in looking through the, there was 70-some-odd conditions, and noise was mentioned, that there was a condition of 60 decibels at the property. And also, there was a, I noticed that some of the, some of the comments were amplified music, you know, past midnight, things like that. I noticed one of the conditions was hours of operation 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. Question, is that only on weekends? Is there a different time for weekdays like there are in some of our use permits?
That, no. Really, there wasn't a differentiation for the actual assemblage events. We did not make that delineation in this case, so.
And is that, is that based on the fact there's just 12 events per year?
Yes.
So you're kind of assuming those are weekends?
Yes, and sometimes the Planning Commission will change that up a little bit, especially if you start looking at our agricultural services and our contractor storage yards. We start using that guidance for weekends versus weekdays, but in this case, it was pretty, especially since the noise is going to be regulated at 60 dB. It's not really a big, big issue, we don't think.
Okay. And, and the second one was just about light shielding. I noticed there was quite a few comments about the lights, upward-facing lights. The pictures seem to be more of the garden kind of lights and things like that, but there were a lot of comments on upward-facing lights, kind of implying floodlights lighting up the sides of the hills and things like that with the impacting dark sky. Any comments on that as the conditions read?
Well, again, the pictures were pre-use permit, and then there's post-use permit. And once the use permit gets in, is in effect, we will be able to regulate that better. The dark sky didn't look like it was, again, it's not a law in this county to have those dark sky protections, and we are just borrowing from the Three Rivers Community Plan when we discuss those things. But the use permit itself will protect the dark sky. It's hard to tell from the pictures how, how much the dark sky was upset by those pictures themselves, but in the future, the light will be shielded downwards and will be made not to project upwards.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Any other questions from Board members? Okay. Seeing no further questions at this time, I would like to invite the appellant, Ms. Seligman, or her representative, to present her appeal. If you would keep your presentation to 15 minutes or less, it'd be appreciated.
I will try to keep my presentation to 15 minutes, but I cannot promise that I will do that. Again, good morning to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Dennis V. Avicencio. I'm representing Ms. Seligman in this case. Neither she nor her husband could be here today. He just had a recent surgery, and he's had some complications from that, and they apologize for their inability to both of them be here. As I told you previously, for 13 years, I owned and operated a lodge and an inn at the entrance to Sequoia National Park, Buckeye Tree Lodge in the Sequoia Village. the entrance to Sequoia National Park, Buckeye Tree Lodge and the Sequoia Village Inn. I have quite an extensive amount of experience in running hotels, inns, lodges, vacation rentals, et cetera. I own vacation rentals. I have managed them. I have written contracts for them. It's fairly extensive. I have also served as, for the last twelve, over twelve years, as a paid-call firefighter with Tulare County. I am not here in that role, so I want to be very clear about that. I am here as the attorney for the Seligmans, not as a county employee or as a county firefighter. I want to reiterate the fact that the Seligmans are not here because they're opposed to the Redwood Ranch as a vacation rental, much as any of the other vacation rentals in town. They're not opposed to that at all. There were very few impacts, and there were no complaints ever when it was operated as strictly a vacation rental. There's no worry about competition as well. This is a competition issue. We've heard this raised by the parties, but the reality is the Seligmans operate their own vacation rental, but it's a small unit that sleeps no more than four people. They're not in competition with a six-bedroom house, which is Redwood Ranch. The issue really for the Seligmans and many of the other folks that you may hear from and that we've dealt with in the complaints and at the planning commission level is not at all with the vacation rental aspect. It is with the destruction of the peace and quiet, the tranquil nature, the dark skies that has occurred at the end of South Fork. At the planning commission, we heard some of the kids that live nearby there talk about that other than hearing the owls and the frogs at night, what did they hear? YMCA, you know, blaring to them on the stereo system. That's not something that anybody wants to hear when you're a resident and you live out in the country. Frankly, I don't think it's something somebody wants to hear if you live in the city either, but that's just my own personal thing. We're also concerned about the substantial impacts to the environment, the significant increase of the traffic on a very substandard road for this type of commercial venture, the elevated fire risk to the community, and the risk of hundreds of party guests being trapped on a one-way, one-way out, one-way in narrow winding mountain road. Folks, the reality of this is that this is a financially-driven project, plain and simple. Let's look at the numbers. According to Redwood Ranch's own website, the minimum fees for up to twenty-five guests for a venue fee is four thousand dollars plus a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cleaning fee, plus the rental on the house, which is required, another nine hundred dollars per night with a two-night minimum, plus additional fees. At the very least, a two-night stay with the smallest party at the Redwood Ranch venue will deposit sixty-four hundred dollars into the Redwood Ranch bank account. On the other hand, if it's a large party, as many of the South Fork folks have had to endure, the, according to their website, a party of over two hundred guests, which is allowed under what they're seeking, will provide a fourteen-thousand-dollar venue fee, a seven-hundred-dollar cleaning fee, eighteen-hundred-dollar rental for the barn, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars in cleaning fees, plus if they have campers, the eighty campers they're requesting, that's another four thousand dollars, a two-day total of twenty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Folks, this is not a benevolent gift to the community of, gosh, let's bring people up here to enjoy the peace and quiet. This is a profitable endeavor. This is a business deal. So I want to reiterate, though, that this business deal comes at the price. It comes at a price for the residents and the neighbors that live up there. They're the ones that are going to pay the price for this. Now, according to Redwood Ranch's own words, their wedding venue has been part of the industry since two thousand and fifteen, which is right after the Georgias purchased the property in two thousand and fourteen. By two thousand and sixteen, they were touting themselves as one of California's top outdoor wedding ceremony and wedding reception venues. But Redwood Ranch never sought a permit from the county. They never sought to go and talk to all their neighbors and ask them or talk to them about what they were doing, and they just kept growing this business, this wedding and party venue, until it became too much for everybody to handle. Now, the neighbors initially did not complain about the occasional, but as this grew into the large endeavor, obviously, they became very concerned. Massive traffic, people honking horns in the middle of the night, listening to YMCA. You know, in those canyons, a lot of times, the noise travels a little bit differently than it might in the city. It travels a long distance, and it might, you might not hear it a half-mile away, but you might hear it two miles away. That's the nature of the rocks in the canyons. I put together and submitted to RMA a very extensive brief that documented a lot of the problems and the issues, and it's not just Facebook posts. What they are, are they are pictures and documents from Redwood Ranch's own websites. There are pictures and documents from the clients and the people that were there, and they show the extent, the significant extent of the partying. The partying that included not just, let's go, you know, have fun at a wedding. They included parties with THC and cannabis-infused goodies and warnings to parents about keeping your kid, you know, keep watching your kids because these things were going to be out for everybody, you know, trays of thirty to sixty Jäger shots at a time being handed out. Now, I'm not against a good party. Don't get me wrong. I, you know, we all enjoy that. But by two thousand and nineteen, the Redwood Ranch was certainly aware of all of the issues and the parties and the complaints and the unhappiness of their neighbors. I've heard Mr. Bach state repeatedly, both at the planning commission and here, that there were no substantiated complaints. But the reality is, the sheriff's department on one occasion, in July of two thousand and nineteen, July nineteenth, went out to investigate a noise complaint. And when the deputy arrived at midnight, he heard no music. He spoke to the property renter. She advised that they were just playing music and they had been playing music, and they had just stopped twenty minutes earlier. That is a substantiated complaint, folks. She admitted that they were playing the music and that it was loud, but they had just turned it off, and so obviously, at that point, you know, he had nothing else to do. But the irony of this report, this was just this last year, is in July of two thousand and nineteen, July nineteenth of two thousand and nineteen, in the middle of the summer, when the deputy went to leave, he proceeded to drive out of the gravel driveway, and you know what he accidentally ran over? A fire pit. A fire pit. In July, the middle of the summer, folks have a fire pit. They're using a fire pit. And, you know, we've heard about the concern that they're going to be very careful about fire, but the reality is, there was no caretaker or manager there. It was just people partying at midnight with a fire pit, and they just turned off the noise, the music. One of the big issues in this case is the inability of the folks that live up there to control what is going on behind those gates because you don't have access to it. The other thing to remember here, or to understand, perhaps the board is not aware, but RMA and Redwood Ranch's attorneys have met and discussed how to cooperatively maximize the Georgia's big business plan. This is only the beginning of this plan. This, what, according to the Georgia's own attorney during a meeting on November fifth, he stated, "To achieve the full goal of the owner's business plan, you recommended that the project should go through an EIR. Redwood Ranch is willing to do so." He's writing this to Michael Washam. Yet, the RMA has come in here today and said, "We don't need to do an EIR. There's no substantial impacts." Well, wait a second here. They know that there are substantial impacts. They know that this is a big deal. This is a big venue. Why is it that they're recommending that they do an EIR on one hand, and then on the other hand, they're sitting here telling you there's no reason to do an EIR? Well, is it because if you operate twelve events or twenty-four events, it suddenly changes? Perhaps if that's a matter of degree, then Sequo requires that you undertake an EIR. Well, the reason they're doing this is because Redwood Ranch has already fully booked their calendar for this two thousand and nineteen. And so, in order to accommodate as many of those events as they can, they're seeking a special use permit, and at the same time, they're seeking, they've started the EIR So, and this isn't my speculation on this. This is their own correspondence, and if you'd like a copy of it, I can provide it to you, their own attorney's correspondence. And they're talking about this, the steps that they're going to take, and they're working cooperatively with RMA to achieve this objective. Now, it's, he says, he continues that, "We understand that we will be seeking the SUP that will allow a maximum of twelve events per year, but irrespective of the SUP process and what happens at the planning commission, that process will not provide the full entitlements that Redwood Ranch is seeking. Therefore, we want to commence the EIR for the full project plan now." This is in November. This isn't like it was years ago. This is the plan that's in effect that they're doing. Even if the SUP is granted for twelve events per year, the Redwood Ranch has its thirteenth event of two thousand and twenty booked for early August, so our admittedly ambitious goal is to complete the EIR and the grant of entitlements prior to that date. Interestingly enough, when you go through and you look at the events that Redwood Ranch has listed on their website, they have their twelve events listed, but we've, my clients have found other weddings that are not listed on here. Now, it would seem to me that a wedding would qualify as an event under what we're talking about here. Maybe I say that because I got married, it was about twelve years ago, and I can tell you that it was an event, and I'm still married, fortunately. But there's no question that a wedding is an event. So I don't know how it is that these events have been determined, or whether they're just based on the size of the event and they're excluding smaller events. I don't, again, these are issues that are unclear here, but the board of supervisors should make sure that they're very clear about what's going on up there, and whether there's trying to be a circumvention of the twelve events that are allowed here. Now, to me, it's very clear, if there's a wedding or there's a party, there's an event. Most vacation rentals and managers strictly prohibit parties and weddings at their vacation rentals. That's typical, I know, because I've drafted many of these agreements. I have these agreements, and I've seen them. So it would be, it would seem very clear that if they're going to have any event such as this, that it needs to be on their calendar, and that they're not permitted to have small events under the radar. Again, the issue here is compliance. How are the residents, the South Fork residents and other folks, supposed to ensure that there's compliance with Redwood Ranch's numbers, whether it's the eighty guests that are camping, or whether it's two-hundred-and-fifty guests at a party? It's virtually impossible. And it's not like they can call Mr. Bach to come up at eleven o'clock at night to take a decibel reading. It's not going to happen. If they call the sheriff, they know it's going to be an hour or two or more, depending on what else is going on down in the valley, before somebody can come up there to see what's going on. Now, I am going to reiterate, I'm not here as a firefighter, but I am going to discuss some of the fire issues. I discussed some of those last time when I was here with regards to Sunshine Ranch, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to go over all that again. But I am going to talk about some things here that are much more significant than what we talked about with Sunshine. While there are plans in place, and Mr. Bach talked about, to evacuate the building, and there are, in the fire documents, there are statements by Mr. Meyer that talk about where not to park, how many water tanks and such to have. Conspicuously absent from any of this is an evacuation plan for two-hundred-and-fifty or more people should an emergency event such as a wildfire occur. Before you approve this project, you have to ask yourselves, in the event of a fire, how are you going to evacuate these folks down or out of there? The reality is, you can't. You cannot do it. Not within, not within hours, because most of these folks are going to have been shuttled in. You can't just run shuttles up and down, up and down, up and down to get these people out. These are things that occur in a matter of minutes, not hours. You don't have hours to get folks out of these locations. Who flees? Who doesn't? Is it women and children first? Do the men have to stay as something's coming up? And if the fire is coming up the canyon, if there's a fire started below the canyon, and as is typical in South Fork, the wind blows up the canyon every day in the summer. How are you going to get out? There's no way out. You cannot shelter in place in a gravel parking lot, two-hundred-and-fifty people plus staff. You also have the cumulative impact with Sunshine Ranch up even further of trying to get those folks out if there's a major wildfire event. This is something you have to think about, that Tulare County Board of Supervisors has to think about, because if this comes, and this reality ever were to happen, you can bet your you-know-what that the lawyers are going to come swarming in here and say, "How did you approve this, knowing what, you know, you couldn't get these people out? How could you approve this?" In fact, the, Mr. Meyer's own document talks about a hundred and fifty people, and here we have now two-hundred-and-fifty. Mr. Bach talked about the fact that this project was not expanded from the original application, but it was actually limited. However, if you look through the application that was submitted, I believe it was by Mr. Andrew George, and it was signed by him as well, and this is in March of two thousand and nineteen. What he talks about is that the total acreage or area being used is plus or minus one acre. We know that it's larger than that. According to this, it says two-point-five acres. This is primarily weekends, eight AM to ten PM, and we know that's been expanded to eleven PM. We know that in here, they said this was only up to a hundred people. On page eight of fourteen of the application that was made, the expected number of attendees was twenty to a hundred. They proposed entertainment was acoustic only. The only amplification type was the announcer's microphone. That's all changed. This is much greater. And the reason is because they were doing all these things anyway, was well documented. So when they came in here with this permit they're seeking, now they're seeking all of this, this amplification bands. You can see the pictures in the documentation that I provided to RMA, where they had multiple, they had live bands with stages, they had ten-foot-high by ten-foot-wide speakers. They had, they had, some of the stages had two drum sets on them, guitars lined up, lights. It's party time. Interestingly enough, in March of two thousand and nineteen, Mr. George, Mr. Andrew George, wrote to Tulare County RMA, and he said, "Amplification and events is restricted to one microphone for announcing only and must be turned off after ten PM." Yet, I have an entire brief filled with pictures, and pictures and pictures of what was really By the way, I live in Three Rivers, and the hills are already turning brown, and it's February. So this fire issue is, it's serious. It really is a serious issue for everyone to think about. And it's not that we're picking on the Georgias. It's not that anybody has any problem with them personally. It's the nature of what they're trying to do and the location they're trying to do it. You know, the special use permit process is here for a reason. It's here for the board of supervisors to look at these issues and decide whether or not it's appropriate. Even if RMA says it, they think it's fine. Ultimately, you have to make the decision whether or not you want to risk these people's lives. Most of the visitors that come up there aren't going to have thought for a second that they're going to any place that's unsafe, that they could be trapped or entrapped. They don't know. Most of them are city folk. Not that there's anything wrong with that, of course. Certainly, they're not going to, they're not going to survive a fire in the tents that are set out in the parking lot. One of the key components of the special use permit process for Tulare County is section sixteen V O seven establishes certain minimum criteria and findings. There's no way that, item number four, which requires that the public and private roads providing access to the subject property meet necessary standards to provide safe and adequate access, or have been amended by conditions of approval to satisfy the access requirements. You can't do that, given what we know is a very high, the highest fire risk in the state in that area, and no way, no other way in or no other way out, but a road in which two vehicles in many, many places cannot even pass, let alone rescue or fire equipment.
Would you please wrap up your comments? I've given you an extra five minutes.
Yes, thank you, and I will. The road is a critical issue, and we have submitted The road is a critical issue, and we have submitted a report by an expert regarding the road, and the analysis that was done by RMA was based on a, an outdated standard that was highlighted in the report. It was a standard based on, in 2002, or 2008. The current standards are different than that. The other reason that the road is a really critical factor in an analysis for you as to whether or not to approve this, is that what you have at, at Redwood Ranch is you have this big party scene, and you have people, a lot of vehicles driving, anywhere from 30, 30 to 50 cars can, can park there. With the amount of alcohol that's being served and the lack of control over that, many of these events, all the alcohol is just laid out for anyone to use, to drink. There's no regulation. Some of the events have bartenders, some of them don't. Some of them, you're allowed to bring your own alcohol and serve, and serve it. With those lack of controls, those people are going to be driving down that road. They're going back down to the hotels, the vacation rentals, the other places, because they're not all staying at Redwood Ranch. If you have 250 people there, some of them are being shuttled in, but many of them are going to be driving. And we know what's going to happen eventually when that, when that happens. In fact, just last week, we had a visitor in Three Rivers who'd been smoking marijuana, drinking alcohol, ran off the road, totaled his vehicle, actually, it was his mother's vehicle. But the reality is, luckily, nobody, no, no, nobody who was innocent was injured in that. He hurt himself, but he didn't hurt anybody else. But given, given that long, treacherous road, it's only a matter of time here. Some of the additional concerns that was raised by Supervisor Townsend was regarding the lighting. I had occasion not too long ago, although it was over a month ago, to drive down that road at night from Ladybug, where I was up with my son doing a hike. We came down in the evening, and we came around the corner, and lo and behold, it was, it was like string town full of lights. There were lights hanging off the buildings and lights. They're the cafe-style lights. So what they are is they're, they're just the, the little lights, and they light up, they're not directional, they don't direct down, they just light. They throw light 360, you know, degrees essentially. And there were strings of lights all over the place. I was floored, and I knew that Redwood Ranch was there, but I was floored by the amount of light crisscrossing all over and to and from the buildings and in the trees and such. It's not just, just, just me or other folks that, that have to deal with this, it's the wildlife, the impacts to the wildlife. Now, the National Park Service and Fish and Game were not advised of the actual scope of this project, and were not provided an ample and sufficient opportunity to comment on this, because they were never advised of what Redwood Ranch is seeking to do, not in the special use permit, and not with regards to the upcoming EIR. So this project should be denied. We've, I talked previously in the Sunshine Ranch about the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and a lot of the issues that are, apply there, apply here. I'm going to try and wrap this up quickly, so those, I'm not going to go over that again. But again, one of the important things to remember here is that the special use permit process, Tulare County's own process, has a number of, of requirements that have to be met. One of them I went over was item number four, the public and private roads. The other is that the special use permit shall be granted only if it is found that the establishment, maintenance, and operation and use of the building or land applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Folks, this is totally out of character with what is, has been of South Fork since at least time began, and people have been inhabiting that area. This is not a venue that is appropriate for that location. It's not appropriate for the folks that live there. It's not appropriate for the, the health and safety, the road, the noise, the lights. And there's been inadequate amount of study done regarding the wildlife. But certainly for the people, the people that live there, that's the requirement, that it can't be detrimental to them. And it has been. And even if you put into place these restrictions, they're still going to have to put up with that. You know, maybe to a lesser degree than the completely unfettered that has gone on in the past. But nevertheless, it's, it's a substantial diminishment of the enjoyment of their own private property and their own rights. So with that, I'm going to ask you very strongly to not approve this project, and thank you very much. If you have any questions, I certainly can answer, or I can submit any of these documents.
Okay, seeing no questions, I will now look to the applicant or its representatives. You may now use this time for rebuttal, and you have 15 minutes as well. I hope that you can keep it to that timeframe as well.
I'm going to try to make it five minutes.
All right, that would be great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors and Staff. My name's Eric George, and my only regret is that we cannot have this hearing on-site, because what you would see is 190 acres of really stunning beauty, only a sliver of which is used for what you've been hearing about. You can't use the remainder of it unless you want a hideously bad case of poison oak. It's a lot of brush, but the part that you can use is extraordinary. It's a river, it's a driveway that comes down to a barn, there is an area where people can enjoy really meaningful hiking and other experiences in nature, and it's really something else. It wasn't that way when my brother Andrew and I, who's sitting right here, bought the ranch in 2014. It was strange. There was loads of litter everywhere, fences that led nowhere, pipes in the river, a mucky koi pond that had been recently installed, chains on trees and things like that. We've really made it something else, and I'm really proud of it. And I should point out, I've been in Three Rivers, my family's been a property owner in Three Rivers since the early 1970s. So I'm not going to give anybody bragging rights over knowing Three Rivers better. I love Three Rivers, and I love this place that we've created. It's a terrific place for our family and for friends. I'm proud of how we've improved the land. And yes, one joy, a fairly unexpected joy, has been sharing this. And what we did is we took advantage of the fact that the prior owners had rented out the property from time to time, and what they had done is they had occasionally had weddings and other events. And we continued that sporadically. My mindset at first was, why not? This will be a good way to make some money to be able to pay for an on-site caretaker, who we have is a very responsible man. But something really incredible happened. I think we've now had visitors from 23 countries, we've had all sorts of reviews, and not to get too corny about it, but you really get a sense that there is a hunger that a lot of people have to be able to go into an area that has real wildlife and beauty and experience it. And that's been an incredibly satisfying thing to see. I want to be so clear on this point, though, because as I sit here and I'm listening to some of the things that Counsel said, and I know he's an advocate, they're just not remotely part of reality. There's some stark misrepresentations, and it's really not a representation of what you'd experience if you were there. I want to make clear that we do not engage in any commerce of any sort. There's no exploitation of any of the resources, there's no providing of services. What we do is, we allow certain individuals on responsible and limited terms and conditions to host certain events, whether it's a wedding, or a Boy Scout troop, or a family reunion. And again, as the Supervisors know, it's just 12 of these a year. So I want to pivot and talk about how I really have embraced the process of working with the RMA. I can't say this sincerely enough, we're a better place because of it. They've done an unbelievable job in terms of their dedication of time and their professionalism, that we now know that with respect to claims, whether they were made in good faith or not, about light pollution or noise pollution, fire safety, use of the road, we've got a really good and responsible thing. And let me just point out briefly, I didn't want to spend much time responding to Counsel, but when I hear things like the fear of deaths through fire, and quote, "People aren't going to survive a fire there," let me remind everybody, we're three and a half miles away from the very Ladybug campsite that was mentioned, a national park site, with many areas that are offered for campers. Any criticism that might be made of the possibility of fire or danger that is downriver applies with even greater force upriver. If this is really a problem we're hearing about, I would expect there to be major complaints made to the National Park Service. Things about destruction of peace and quiet, just utter nonsense. And I want to point out, too, that there is one misrepresentation that was made that I actually wish were accurate, that this is a quote, "profitable endeavor." Really? Well, I wish that were so. It is not so. And let me add that every penny that has come in in revenue, let's not confuse revenue and profit, has gone right back into betterment of the property. I want to conclude, because I do want to stick to my own time limit, and just point out that everything that has been recommended by the RMA, and it was approved by the Planning Commission, we embrace, whether that's working with fire officials, working with and accepting any conditions pertaining to plant or animal life, we regard ourselves as good stewards of that, and same for any Native American sites. This is something that has got to be a benefit to everybody in Three Rivers and to those people who choose to visit it. I think it is very much in keeping with and actually reflects beautifully upon Three Rivers. I'm very proud of it, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from any of my colleagues? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Now I will open it up for a public comment. Any person may comment on this item. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody wishing to make a comment at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Alan Lambeth. I live at 19501 Avenue 364.
Pull that microphone around to you, Alan. Thank you.
I live at 19501 Avenue 364 in Woodlake, just up near Elderly. My wife Kathy and I have a catering business called All Fired Up Pizza, and we've been doing it for about 10, we're starting our 10th year right now. We're retired teachers. Pete was, my wife was teaching at the school, or Pete was in high school.
She taught me math.
Yes, yes.
She's a good one.
Now, this year, we're beginning our 10th year, and we travel to Tulare Kings and Fresno County, and we do catering. We take our oven on a trailer, we go to your house, we assemble our pizzas and bake them in our wood-fired oven, and serve them to your, to your client, your guests. We do, we've done business jobs for like 20 people to 150 people were making of pizzas. When it comes to Redwood Ranch in Three Rivers, we were hired last year for nine events. They're a good customer of ours, so I have, we have kind of a vested interest. The average number of guests that we served last year was 71, 71 guests. The smallest was 30, and the largest was 120. Some of our events are for the wedding rehearsal dinners, so it's a smaller group. Others are for the actual events, so it's a larger group. We usually arrive around in the late afternoon, and we, we set up and we make pizzas for a couple hours, and then we clean up and we're gone. We're there usually for about three hours. So from the time we get there to the time we leave, it's about three hours. It's in the dark when we usually leave. I can only speak about what I've seen, driving up there, being there, and then driving home. So that's my experience. All the clients that we've dealt with have been very nice, and as you mentioned before, they're not from this area, they're from the city, they're city folk, and usually from the Bay Area or Southern California. When we speak to their guests, they're not just from those areas, they're from further ways. They've flown into the area and come there, so they're experiencing our area for the first time, most of them. The facility is well taken care of. We have, we work on the gravelled area where we set up and serve our guests. There's water, there's electricity, they're amazing portable bathrooms. The people that are there, they're, we're only there for three hours, they're some, they're there for two or three days sometimes, so they're not just staying on-site, they're going to the parks, they're going to the lake, they're going on the river, they're doing amazing things. So they're enjoying amazing things. Road concerns, it's, it's six, seven and a half miles up to the site from Highway 198. Six miles of it are a nice paved two-lane road. The last mile and a half is winding, kind of rough road. And in our experience there, we've been up and down, up nine times, down nine times. I think I can only see, remember three times before we even counted another vehicle that we had to pull over, they had to pull over to pass on that road. But we've always done it, it hasn't been an issue. We like that we see the using, use of the chartered vans to keep traffic down on the road. Our employees, usually it's my wife and I, and we have two, usually two workers, and our workers will ride together in a car rather than having two cars come up and down that road, because it is a little bit strange the last mile and a half. Sound levels, again, speaking from my experience, the sound level of the wedding activities has never been very high. We have done a number of events at other locations where there are bands and now DJs, but all the events that we have had, they're, had acoustical entrances, acoustical instruments and some sort of sound source, usually a phone or an iPod or something that's playing the music through speakers.
Would you wrap up your comments, Alan?
Okay.
Pass the time limit.
There are a lot of events occurring at Redwood Ranch that we're not hired to be at, and even those that we are present for, we are there around three hours, so the actual event might last two or three days. I have only spoken about the nine events that we have attended, and each one is well-planned and attended by a lot of well-behaved people who are experiencing a very nice event. It was located at one of the most beautiful areas in Tulare County. I encourage you to work with the residents of the area and the owners of Redwood Ranch and develop a plan that will allow the venue to continue to provide a special place for creating those special memories, while at the same time providing for the safety and security of the surrounding residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. I have a public comment request form from Adina Alati.
Hi, my name's Adina Alati. I live at 2609 South Mendonka here in Visalia, and I'm actually representing Elaine Decasian, who is with Trabian Fine Catering. I also am an event manager myself, and I do several venues. Elaine couldn't be here this morning because she had to work, but she wrote a statement. "I love the ranch, and so do the incredible people who come from all over the world to be in this place, to exchange their vows, build memories, and not only to take place in the beauty and atmosphere, but to be in nature. These people do not come here to party, consume ridiculous amounts of alcohol, or to raise hell. They come here for just the opposite. They sip lovely wines, eat great food, dance a little, and sit by the river or the firepit and take peace in the experience. These aren't huge loud events where the bride and groom don't know half of the people in their own wedding. These are intimate gatherings of people who have their closest friends and family in attendance. I have done countless weddings there, and I have never experienced anything negative. Everyone abides by the rules and have always been nothing but kind and respectful. I have met some of the most interesting people in my long career here. They are people who carefully choose where they want to be married or celebrate their family event. They are professionals, world travelers, multilingual, lovers of nature, and intelligent. When it's time to shut down, they shut down. Cleanup is handled, garbage is packed up, the music stops, the bar closes. To not have this place would be such a shame. I can't tell you how happy coming here makes people. Redwood River Ranch is my favorite place to work, and I have worked all over the state. I implore you to let it continue to bring joy to those that wish to visit this ranch. Thank you."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional public comments? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Justine Fisher, and I'm here with Sierra Sanitation. We've been working with Redwood Ranch for several years now for their portable toilet usage and so they don't impact their septic system. And I can tell you in all the years we've worked, worked with them, that they've always been responsible to have the additional VIP units on-site for their guests. If there's ever been an issue that they need If there's ever been an issue that they needed us to come up and do additional services over the weekend, it's been taken care of to take care of all of their guests. And I can tell you over the several years that we've been up there, there's been a lot of improvements on the ranch. I think it's a beautiful place, I hear a lot of good comments and responses from people that call my business to rent our VIP units, and I think it's a beautiful place to let them have their venues.
Great, thank you. Additional public comments?
Hello, my name is Haley Thorne, address 43168 North Coe River Drive. I'm a Three Rivers resident, clearly, born and raised. My family has resided there since the late 1800s. I know what a special, unique place Three Rivers is. I also know that even the smallest change can be challenging for Three Rivers residents. I personally support good people doing good things. I've had the pleasure to get to know Eric and Andrew on a personal level. They are the kindest, most generous people. I've spent a lot of time at the ranch, I've attended a couple weddings there. Definitely the mellowest weddings I have ever attended. Like everyone was saying, people get married there for the serene nature. I've been to a wide array of weddings in my life, and there's a reason why people choose this venue, it's not for a party environment. They, I know that this family has supported our Three Rivers community for a long time. They've supported our school, they're continuing to do so, and I am thrilled to have them in Three Rivers, a place where I moved back to raise my small children. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Additional public comments? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mike Canarosi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. I'm a 25-year general contractor in Three Rivers, and just want to assure you, when you get to know, if you get an opportunity to know the integrity of the George brothers the way I have, which started as a business relationship, this has turned into what's going to be a long-term friendship. And through the course of this, I've seen them change in response to neighbors and put forth a proposal. And with absolute certainty, I do believe that all the guidelines that have been put forth by the Planning Commission will be followed to a T in the operation of Redwood Ranch. That's really about all I had to say.
Great, thank you. Additional public comments?
Good morning, my name is Esther Hacker. I live at 46726 South Fork Drive. I'm an immediate neighbor to the Redwood Ranch. Previously, I have either sent in comments to the county, I have spoken at the Planning Commission, and in fact, our family even invited Eric and Andrew to our house last April to discuss our concerns about the ranch with noise, traffic, fire. I would like to use my time at this time, though, to clarify a few things about the special use permit. One of them is the time for desisting at the Planning Commission, my understanding. And the motion I heard from John Elliott was that it would desist at, all amplified music and all would desist at 10:00 PM, not 11:00 PM. So I would like some clarification on that. I know that events are supposed to be posted for neighbors and the RMA 10 days prior. How are these being posted? Is it just their website, or, I would like to know that. Another is, how many days is it on an event? The special use permit, the temporary one that they received at the end of the year, stated Friday through Sunday, was considered an event over those days. However, two of the four temporary events were more than that. One was four days, one was five days. When you get into events that are five days, that's quite a bit of difference than just over a weekend. So I'd like to know what the special use permit says regarding the length of days and the days of the week. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments this morning? Okay, seeing no additional public comments, I will bring it back to the board. Mr. Bach, do you have a response?
Yes, Chairman Vanderpoel, I just wanted to respond in the record in regards to the actual engineering report that was done, and say that even though the engineer stated that we used a older version of the ITE, that in fact he didn't state how it changed any of the studies that we did or any numbers whatsoever, it just stated we were using an older version. So I don't know how you want to take that information, but again, merely stating that you used an older version isn't a fact in to itself, warranting fair argument. And as far as the clarifications, yes, Mr. Elliott did say amplified sounds would cut off at 10:00, and we did cut off the events, I stand corrected, Mr. Townsend, as far as the events would stop 10 o'clock on Sunday. So, if there is any other questions the board may have for me?
Any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we will now close the public testimony and bring it to the board for action and direction. Supervisor Crocker, I'll turn to you. Actually, I have Supervisor Valero, he snuck in there with an electronic ping, so I'll let him go first. Go ahead Supervisor Valero.
Okay. So I'll just start, and thank you everyone for being here for this particular item, and especially for those individuals that provided context for the item. After reviewing the Redwood Ranch item before us, I was a little hesitant about the use of such space. And when reviewing the illustrations in the packet, starting on page 197, I was even more concerned about the use of such space for these kind of activities. But again, these pictures are coming from one side of both parties, so just wanted to make that clear. Because when I did look at one in particular, it was on page 207, and there was some type of paddling going on in that venue space, in addition to some items that centered on marijuana and drinking, which may further impair users of such space, especially if and when guests are traveling home. To me, judgment is loose in this case, but to me, it concerns me that when people leave this place, the responsibility becomes everyone else's, and our roads become less safe. Still, I understand that this can and does happen anywhere and everywhere, and I understand that this meets our county policy. I return to our TP example, the example with the Sunshine Project that was mentioned earlier, and feel that each item should be judged accordingly. Was I personally in favor of it? More no than yes, but I'd like to hold each case to the standard of our county policy. And I am aware that at least 70 conditions have already been included in this project. And these concessions are necessary for the protection of neighbors, neighborhoods, and longstanding ambiance already in place. And so, again, I'd just like to thank and reiterate these individuals that came forward today and shared their experiences with this venue as well.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have, if I could ask staff some questions as far as to clarify the last testimony. I know you discussed the time of shutdown, but can you discuss the, how we determine events, and the length of those events, as well as how we notify individuals, what that process looks like?
So what we've said in our conditions is that we would notify everybody 10 days in advance of any event. We consider the whole weekend an event, so we don't separate out the days necessarily by event. And so the shutdown times are 11:00, but the, per Mr. Elliott, we would actually stop the amplified noise, again, consistent with the Lions Club at 10:00, so. And we have, in addition, offered to actually do some inspections at night of these events. I even offered myself to go out there. So yes, I-
I thought you would go out at 11:00 at night.
I will take my noise meter with me as part of the challenge that was offered earlier.
The notification of events, so how is that, is that online?
We will do, they'll post it online. We'll also receive the schedule of events for the year, so if they're outside of those events, we'll know right away. If we don't catch it, I'm sure the neighbors will. And so the, we also will be able to, when they do post 10 days in advance, we'll be able to notice that as well.
And can you discuss how enforcement of the 70 conditions, what that looks like?
Well, we are not going to advertise that we're coming out. The first time I did offer to do that, but after that, we will actually inspect the site prior to, again, similar to Lions Club, we will inspect the site to make sure they're meeting their conditions. As far as lighting and other things, we can see right away whether the event's happening or not, and then when we're at the events, we'll be able to note any violations of the conditions. And then look for a process to fix those conditions.
So we're planning on being proactive if this is approved, as well as the typical reactive or neighbors' complaints?
We are being very proactive, given the board's concerns with this party barn in particular, but other ones as well. So this is going to become part of our policies and procedures at RMA.
Thank you.
Okay.
For all my questions, I've got comments, but if-
Sure, go ahead, you can go ahead and make your comments, that's fine.
One, I appreciate the time and effort, and I know there's been numerous letters and emails and phone calls that have come into the Board of Supervisors' office regarding this project in particular for months. I know this has been, this has been something that has been a lengthy process to get to this point, but I do think that some of my colleagues have mentioned some of the things that I think are very unique, the 70 conditions of approval, the maximum of 12 events per year, the shutter requirements for large events, limiting the noise and limiting the time, I think are all things that make this unique to many other party barn event-type venues that the rest of the county has. I know that we've talked about in the past, Supervisor Townsend's brought up at our board meeting that we held in Ivanhoe about bringing back a noise ordinance because that is something of an issue countywide, and so, you know, trying to work on that and making sure that we are doing something along those lines to try and make sure that we're not only protecting the personal property of the individual owners, but protecting the property of our neighbors as well, and making sure that they have a certain right to their property that they have, and nuisances is infringing upon their rights when there are nuisances. So I think, though, that there's also something that hasn't been discussed, and that's personal responsibility. It's something that, you know, wasn't shared today, but there's, there has to be some level of personal responsibility on behalf of individuals that are interested in using this site, that they recognize some of the potential hazards or issues that might be by being in a remote location. And I think that goes to the point for anyone that's going into Mineral King or other parts of the National Park that are very remote. I recognize that there are issues and challenges, but that ultimately, we've, we've got to take some ownership for our decisions that we make. That's all the comments I have.
Okay, Supervisor Shucklian?
I just want to echo that. I was going to also mention, just with the conditions that have, have been set and the property rights of the folks at Redwood Ranch and their neighbors. And I also want to highlight also the business that it provides for some of the, provides business opportunities for, as we heard, a lot of our local businesses and caterers and all that, which I think is a very important aspect of this.
Okay. I just want to make a few comments myself. I actually appreciated the comments of the property owner, and I appreciate the comments of various small businesses and stakeholders in and around this project. I think that is helpful to hear from those folks who are impacted, and it's very helpful to hear from a property owner that actually is vested in the community and gives back to the community and is well-respected, I think, for your generosity, and I think that says a lot about you. And it also says a lot about the project when you're willing to accept 70 conditions of approval. That is definitely no small feat, and you are going to be incredibly constrained if this project is approved. But again, taking that personal and individual responsibility is an important thing. You know, code of conduct of your guests, you know you may be able to control what they're doing, but hopefully we're all adults and they take that code of conduct or personal responsibility seriously as well, because there are neighbors around you who are affected as well, and other Tulare County residents. So I do appreciate those comments. Is there any need from this board for a closed session? This is set for a closed session, or do you feel that we are prepared to move forward at this time? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion. Affirm I can dispute.
SP 19019.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Valero, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. And there, go ahead.
Your motion to deny the appeal? Oh, oh, no, not to, oh, sorry. Let me go back. So it would be to deny the appeal, yes, and to affirm the Planning Commission's approval.
Okay, motion is second, votes are staying the same. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being here today and for the presentation.
You happen to have any of those pizzas with you, by chance, sir? Ready-made?
Board, we will take a five-minute recess so that some of our older employees and board members can use the restroom. Back in session, we will take up item seven at this time. This is a public hearing, which is now open, and this is regarding the Lemon Cove Community Plan update. And that was a nice, short sentence, and I will turn it over to you to read a very long presentation. Mr. Bach?
Supervisor-
Amy, she'll be back.
Before you begin-
Turn on your microphone there.
General, this is General Plan Amendment Number GPA 17-007. This is the Lemon Cove Community Plan, our second-to-last community plan that we'll be working on on the Valley floor. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview before Dave steps up and gives you the rest of the presentation. We had handouts for the board based on some comments that were delivered to the Planning Commission, and based on the, some of the responses from the agencies, we just wanted to perfect the record with these comments. This includes a petition to deny one of the rezone considerations we have, so we wanted to bring that up first and foremost because this is unique. We've never had a request like that before. So this is the General Plan Amendment, the Lemon Cove Community Plan 2019 GPA 17-007. This includes an initial study mitigating negative declaration, so this will help other projects move forward in the future, so we can tear off this environmental document. This is Amendment of Section 18.9, which does allow for mixed-use overlays, and Amendment of Section 16, which allows by-right uses, and Amendment to the zoning districts. I did want to congratulate Dave and Susan here for such a great effort working with the Lemon Cove Sanitation Department. I know there's been a history there, but I think we've worked through a lot of that. And again, I even want to congratulate the Sanitation District because they have been really helpful in hosting all of our meetings. We are, just by way of background as well, for one supervisor here, we will start Springville in the very near future, and that'll be our last one before we move into the mountains or do something else. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and- So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and he can take over. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpoel, members of the board, Dr. Britt, CIO, and Ms. Peterson, County Council. Presented for your consideration this morning is the Lemon Cove Community Plan GPA seventeen zero zero seven. Initial study mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, Amendment of Section eighteen point nine, PZC nineteen dash zero one six, Amendment of Section sixteen by-right uses, PZC nineteen dash zero one seven, and an amendment to the zoning districts within the proposed urban development boundary as part of the rezoning plan, PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven. As part of the community outreach process for the Lemon Cove Community Plan, there were a host of meetings with the Lemon Cove Sanitary District, and as Aaron mentioned, we appreciate their cooperation in accommodating us at every one of their meetings between August and December of 2019, and also a thank you and an acknowledgement for the Sequoia Union District to accommodate several public outreach meetings there, and passing out flyers to the students to encourage their families to participate in the process. Lemon Cove is located on Highway one ninety-eight, east of Visalia and southwest of Three Rivers. In regards to the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring program, was determined and as recommended that determination that there were less than significant impacts with mitigation in regards to biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and mandatory findings of significant to require pre-construction surveys in order to reduce potential impacts to less than significant. There were technical memorandums for air quality, energy and greenhouse gas, and a response to comments that were included as part of the SEQA analysis. The existing Lemon Cove urban development boundary is delineated in blue with the Lemon Cove Sanitary District, district boundaries delineated in red. The current UDB, as previously adopted, would represent generally the sphere of influence for the Lemon Cove Sanitary District. The adopted land use, consistent with the 2012 General Plan Update, is currently mixed use. It's recommended as part of the General Plan Amendment that the existing urban development boundary of four hundred acres be increased by approximately two hundred and seventy acres for a total size of six hundred and seventy-three acres. The UDB is essentially squared off to match existing zoning districts as well as parcel lines and/or roadways. The current population, as of the 2017 census information, is two hundred and thirty-two residents. The median household income is approximately fifty-two thousand dollars. There are one hundred and fifteen housing units, eighty-four percent of those are single-family units. Eighty-three percent of those housing units are owner-occupied, and again, the water and sewer is provided by the Lemon Cove Sanitary District. The existing and proposed zoning districts are shown here side by side. To the left represents the existing zoning, to the right is the proposed zoning districts consistent with the land use plan and the proposed community plans. The next slide highlights the proposed zoning district changes. To make a few highlights in regards to the proposed zoning, existing commercial areas that are located along Highway one ninety-eight are recommended for mixed-use zoning consistent with our Section eighteen point nine of the zoning ordinance to provide for flexibility in a mixture of uses to help to facilitate economic development within the community as well as to provide a jobs-housing balance and to reduce vehicle miles traveled. A couple of other notable recommendations include rezoning the Sequoia Union School to professional offices, which would potentially accommodate future partnerships with groups such as Family Healthcare Network to provide an on-campus health facility, which the county has participated in, in other communities such as Terabella and Traver. Lastly, promoting residential development in and around the Sequoia Union School. A host of parcels there are recommended for rural residential zoning, which could accommodate new residential development in close proximity to the elementary school. And then recognizing to the south the existing Lemon Cove RV Park, changing that zoning to be consistent with the existing use for commercial recreation. As per the materials that Aaron handed out, there were some concerns that were raised on the part of some of the residents within the community regards to mixed-use zoning proposed within the core area, the central business district and primary residential area within the community of Three Rivers. There were two parcels, APN one thirteen one ten zero thirty-five and APN one thirteen two ten zero thirty-two that are located in the community and delineated on the aerial. Staff had recommended mixed-use zoning, R three mixed-use. Again, there were concerns that were presented on the part of the community, and as a result of those concerns, the Planning Commission did not recommend those parcels for the mixed-use overlay to be applied to them, and they would be retained with their existing zoning of R three and RA as per their existing zoning districts and as recommended to your board by the Planning Commission. In regards to transportation and circulation, Highway one ninety-eight is recommended as a major arterial. Avenue three twenty-four would be recognized as a minor arterial and as well as State Highway two sixteen. Complete streets plan is recommended for the Lemon Cove Community Plan update, consistent and similar to other community plans that have been proposed and adopted by your board. It's recommended for complete streets to provide connectivity, again, from the core community area over to the Sequoia Union School. Phase, phase one would connect Highway one ninety-eight along Avenue three twenty-four to the school, and then a phase two recommended complete streets project between Avenue three twenty-four up to Avenue three thirty, again, running through the central business district and primary residential area within the community. The mixed-use overlay zoning as part of zoning ordinance Section eighteen point nine, again, is recommended to be included in, into the community plan, which again, provides for flexibility for property owners to promote economic development, decrease vehicle miles traveled, and to provide jobs-housing balance within the community. By-right zoning, Section sixteen, is also recommended, again, to provide increased by-right uses within the community to provide flexibility, but that these uses do not have an adverse land use effect on property owners based on development standards and other regulations that are included within the zoning ordinance. The request before your board this morning, again, is to hold a public hearing at nine thirty AM or shortly thereafter. Approve the, approve the, approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission as set forth in attached Exhibit A. Adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, State Clearing House nineteen eleven nine zero three one. Prepare for the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan, consistent with Planning Commission recommendation, as included in Resolution number ninety-six ninety-two. Adopt General Plan Amendment GPA seventeen dash zero zero seven for amendments to Part Three of the Tulare County General Plan to establish a community plan for Lemon Cove and to Part One of the General Plan in regards to amendments for the planning framework, land use, environmental resources management, open space, transportation and circulation elements, consistent with Planning Commission Recommendation Resolution Number ninety-six ninety-three. To amend Section eighteen point nine, PZC nineteen zero one six of the Tulare County Zoning Ordinance Number three fifty-two, establishing the mixed-use combining zone within Lemon Cove, consistent with Planning Mission Recommendation Resolution ninety-six ninety-four. And just as a, a side note in regards to the recommendations for Section eighteen point nine, at the request of the Sanitary District and some residents, the M one combining zone is removed as recommended, as part of the Planning Commission and staff recommendation. So the mixed-use combining overlay zone would just be applied to residential and commercial zoning and would not include an M one designation as part of the recommendations to your board. Amend Section sixteen of Ordinance Number three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance to allow additional by-right uses within the Lemon Cove Community Plan, PZC nineteen dash zero one seven, consistent with Planning Commission Recommendation Resolution Number ninety-six ninety-five. And finally, amend Ordinance three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance as set forth in the zoning district ordinance maps for Lemon Cove, PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven, consistent with the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan to rezon certain properties, consistent with Planning Commission Recommendation Resolution Number nine six nine six. That concludes staff presentation this morning. We would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Bryan at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dave, and we will open up for any public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to comment on this community plan update? Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the board for direction. Supervisor Crocker?
I have a question for staff, so just for clarification, we did incorporate the community's requests as far as to remove properties from mixed-use. I, I know that stated we were removing two APNs. Were there any others that were asked for?
No, all of the other recommendations were approved by the Planning Commission in regards to staff's proposed rezoning plan. Those were the only two parcels that were recommended to not be included as part of the rezoning process by the Planning Commission. All of the others, as proposed, are recommended as part of the staff recommendation and Planning Commission recommendations.
So the community members that are present in the audience, this is, this is A-OK. All right, very good. Thank you.
Half, half the community is here today. Supervisor Crocker, it's good to get those thumbs up.
They chose a great meeting to come.
Okay, any additional questions or comments from board members? All right, Chair will entertain direction.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion approves, five to zero. Thank you very much, and only one more community plan to go. Take your time with that last one, though, it's Springville.
By the way, we're also doing Kingsburg, Delano, and Cutler-Rosey, so that's one we're starting on.
Don't even worry about Cutler-Rosey, that's fine. Oh, sorry, Eddie, my bad. Okay, now we are going to be moving on to the most exciting item of today's agenda. Yeah, round of applause for anybody that could stay awake until this point, Roland. We now have item twenty-two, which is a presentation given by the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office regarding an overview of his department, and that, you know, actually quite interesting, I've been on the board in my twelfth year, and I've never seen a single person practice a PowerPoint presentation before a board meeting, and I saw you practicing here in the chambers last week, Roland, and that was, that was hilarious. Okay, your, your presentation, Roland. Practice makes perfect, bud.
Good morning, and I'm very happy to still say good morning. I was afraid that I would have to say good afternoon. I commend you all. I don't know how you do it. I've just lost my morning nap. I don't know if I've been awake this long in quite some time. Thank you for the invitation to provide you an update overview. I think it states a high-level overview. I don't know whether that means the persons are high-level or the view is high-level, so anyway. Roland Hill, Tulare County Assessor Clerk Recorder here this morning with Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder Tim Kokendorfer. Tim's going to handle all the, the technical hard questions, I guarantee you. So, brief introduction, just, we're going to talk, have a little overview, we're going to talk about structure, the demographics of the office, the department, assessment role, workload, Williamson Act, clerk recorder issues, and then some challenges and strategies. I guarantee you, we're not going to take up a lot of your time. Why do you have an assessor's office? Well, unfortunately, it's constitutionally established. You can't get rid of me. In eighteen fifty-two, it was one of the first nine offices elected in, in the county, and it's a very interesting historical-
And you have to be one of the original elected assessors.
I wasn't there at the election. I knew you were going to say something, so I was ready for you. Hundred and nine votes were cast, I was not one of the hundred and nine. If you ever get really bored, it's a very interesting little historical vignette for you UCLA grads, that's a short, kind of sketch, about the first election. The first assessor did not even live through his first year of term because he got shot in a gambling debt shootout. It was, it was a rough-and-tumble place, and it hasn't changed a lot, has it? So you have an assessor, it's a constitutionally elected and established. Our job is to discover, identify, value all assessable properties. We have approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand assessments, and this is one of the big reasons why you want us. Roughly three hundred and sixty-five million dollars in annual revenue comes to the county by way of the assessor role, and that we work on a ten-point-three-million-dollar annual budget at this time, so, hey, we pay off, we're a good deal. So our structure, we have two different, basically two different divisions, the- So our structure, we have two different, basically two different divisions, the assessor division, clerk recorder division of the department. In the assessor's side, we have the appraisal, values all the assessable properties, the assessment support division handles the legal document analyses, the public contacts, all the exemptions and exclusions. And then the cadastral division creates all the maps for the assessment purposes. On the clerk recorder's side, the clerk's office handles the vital records, births, deaths, marriages, fictitious business, names, oaths of office, notaries. And then the recorder's office records and preserves all the public documents, deeds and judgments. So serving a very key useful purpose for the, for the county of Tulare, obviously on that clerk recorder side. There are a lot of people that just soon not see the assessor, not have an assessor, not, you know, but from your standpoint, from Dr. Britt, is this something new? Is this, but certainly from Jason's point of view, you need the money, it's general fundo, yeah, exactly. The assessor demographics, we currently have right at eighty-nine employees. The average age, this is, this is a segue for you.
Yeah, I was just looking for a category of eighty plus or just ancient.
Average age forty-two right now with eight years average service. Just, just a bit of, you know, trivia, not necessarily trivia because it fits into the strategic part of it. You know, we've, we suffer a retention factor, we have a roughly a fifty-seven, a fifty percent retention rate for new staff that been hired over the last nine years, and so, say eighteen years ago, the average, that eight years of service, the average was twenty-two, now we're down to eight. We're seeing this cycle of more mature knowledgeable people leaving and getting new people in, and it presents those challenges that all, all of your departments are having with hiring, retention, the training. Down to where the rubber meets the road for the assessor's division, the two thousand nineteen assessment role was at thirty-six point five billion. It was a five point one, two percent increase over the prior year. We have a little over one hundred and twenty-four thousand single-family residential assessments, little over ten thousand commercial industrial, roughly eight hundred multifamily, almost twenty thousand ag assessments, the business and personal property division has over twenty thousand assessments, and then we've got nine hundred and forty-four miscellaneous. And the miscellaneous, part of that, and I'll speak to Supervisor Townsend's comment about the oil wells, we do have oil wells, we have oil and gas production in the county, not very much these days, I think we're down to about a dozen active wells, but we have to, we have to assess those. And so those are something that we have been assessing for quite some time. So the, just a graphical pie, pie chart showing the assessed role by type, certainly, you know, it's just a visual indicator that the residential, you know, portion is, is the vast portion of, of the assess role, with the agricultural and commercial coming up second and third there, or third and second as I mentioned them, but we get into some discussions, we've had some discussions at the board level about water issues, sigma, and, and how it's going to affect, you know, the county if it gets really, really severe, and how the ag, you know, the, it will certainly impact the county. If we lost the ag role completely, we don't know what it will do to the other aspects of it because ag is a driver of all the economy we have, but you could see that we could still, we'd struggle, but we could still survive if we lost a significant part of our ag role. For a period of time, we don't know how long, but we could. Graphical example of what the assessed role has done, starting, this particular chart starts in nineteen eighty-eight. You can see that in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-seven, we had roughly a seven and a half billion dollar assessed role, and now we're up at over thirty-six. Tim has, has pointed out some notes for me indicating that, you know, if you, when you look at that, you're going to see that the tax rule doubles. What is it, every fifteen years? Every fourteen years, he says, the tax rule has doubled. That being the case, then looking forward, you might see close to a sixty billion dollar tax role in about nine, ten years. So, if the stock market has more days like yesterday, maybe, maybe not, we'll see. Completed assessable activity, and so we are event-driven in the assessor's office, we, we had roughly ten thousand seven hundred supplemental actions for two thousand nineteen. You can see the, the tracking of this peaked in two thousand seventeen with our new construction and has dropped down some, changes in ownership have, have gone up, kind of plateaued, come down a little bit, come back up. A lot of this new construction and the peak in two thousand seventeen, we did start a concerted effort using overtime hours with our appraisal staff to really start getting some of the backlog out, and that's what we have seen, we've seen a spike in that because of that effort. And so, just in a graphical form, the last five years, new construction, changes in ownership, note that we've added almost two point eight billion dollars of assessed value over those five years in, in these activity sectors. Assessment appeals, you know that you have an assessment appeals board, if people do not agree with their assessment, and we cannot come to any, any concurrence or agreement in the office with the property owner, they may file assessment appeals, and you can see the activity of the assessment appeals, we've almost put them out of business. Going back to the, you know, to the GFC, the Great Financial Crisis, the year of two thousand eight, we had, you know, over thirty-eight hundred assessment appeals, it was, it was absolutely frantic on that, in, in that area. But the way the economy has gone, the way we have structured our, our staffing, we've got it down now, we have some very low, low numbers in the assessment appeal, I think Tim was telling me, we have like fifty-six now active, active appeals and that's it. Now this chart will change if we predict that the split role, we'll talk about the split role in just a little bit. The split role happens in the November twenty ballot, we might see this change drastically once again, we may see those assessment appeals really spike because of the commercial industrial activity valuation. One of the key things we, we have here in the county, of course, are ag, ag properties, the Williamson Act plays into it. We have a very active Williamson Act assessment program, we have over a million acres under the act. The Williamson Act valuation, the taxable value for the two thousand nineteen, twenty year was two point, roughly two and a half billion dollars in taxable value. Please note that we have AB twelve sixty-five. Now Supervisor Vanderpool is the only, the only supervisor on the board now that was around when we instituted AB twelve sixty-five, it happened in two thousand nine and ten, you are fairly new to the board, sir. AB twelve sixty-five was developed by the state, state legislator to, the state had quit sending the counties any subvention funds for the ag preserve as they had done for years and years. And so when the state pretty much wiped those out of the state budget, there were many counties that were considering opting out, getting out of the ag preserve, non-renewing. One county, Imperial County, actually did it. This county was seriously considering it, we had public hearings. AB twelve sixty-five came along, it allowed counties to enact the provisions of that, it lowered the contracts by a little bit, not a lot, but it also gave the counties the ability to actually add a special charge, a special fee to each assessment to defray the subvention, to make up for the subvention funds that were no longer coming in. And, and so you'll see now that we're getting a little over four point one million dollars in AB twelve sixty-five direct charges, which is in excess of what we used to get from the subvention, I don't know if read.
Wasn't the subvention like three point four?
Yeah.
Three point three.
Three point three. Yeah, so we are now bringing in more money on twelve sixty-five, which is paid by the property owners as a special charge on their tax bill. And so this is the time that I'm going to maybe suggest that you reconsider going back into the, the contract business, I don't think you've issued any contracts for now since maybe oh nine, it's been a long time. We get inquiries, I'm sure you probably do, from some of your constituents, maybe it's a time to talk to your RMA staff and see, see about, you know, because we're, it's not, you know, I don't want to say it's not a losing deal, but you can see that the twelve sixty-five charges are making up for the subvention funds that, that had been taken away by the state. Working over to the clerk recorder's side, so we've kind of finished with the assess, the assessor's side. Vital statistics, vital certificates, these are representing the numbers that have been ordered and, and issued copies, copies issued by the clerk's office. So various years in, in, you know, the, the assistant assessor is, is a very deep thinking person, and so he, his comments to me were, this is obvious that death is constant, and that there may be a relationship between birth and marriages, huh?
That's very astute.
Very astute. Birth certificate breakdowns, we're offering this, we've been talking about the homeless issue, many of the, uh, birth certificates now are free, homeless now, I believe, was it two thousand nineteen, Tim, it was a, a law change in two thousand nineteen allows homeless to get three or more birth certificates a year, free of charge. There are also changes in law that the foster, foster families get free certificates as well, just an FYI that not all certificates are, are sold at a outrageously high price.
What's the charge?
Oh, I think it's like nineteen dollars for a copy now, yeah, it's terrible. So much of it is state mandated and, and other fees and other things charged to it. Recorder's side, the number of documents per year, you can see, going back to oh seven, we had a peak during the, the big upswing in real estate. It's rocked along, it's had some minor bumps and bruises, but fairly constant. Got some notes, one of the keys is that it wasn't that long ago, we came to you for approval of electronic recording, it's been a great success to report to you that, as of December, the month of December, sixty-one percent of our, our documents were e-recorded. It's a great number, it's a great service to our, to our constituents, and it certainly is a great, great deal for the staff as well. One thing I'm going to mention here with the, with, I don't know if anyone is familiar with Senate Bill Two, back in two thousand eighteen, instituted a seventy-five dollar charge per recording, an additional fee for the Affordable Housing and Job Act. And so, when it first passed, I'm thinking, I don't know how much money that's going to generate, you know, it didn't sound like it was going to be much. Last year, we sent two point eight million dollars to the state on SB two monies. Imagine what LA County must be sending, LA County has two million parcels, we have a hundred and seventy, a hundred and sixty thousand parcels. Incredible, I'd, I'd like to know how much money that SB two count has amassed and what they're doing with it. Just a, just a bit of trivia there. Recorded documents by type, you can see that the, the deeds and transfers are actually less than property liens and releases, and then, and then other, other kinds. The others might include reconvenances, what is it, covenants and restrictions, solar, what were you saying, solar liens, solar projects now, yeah, yeah. And the deed breakdown by area, not too surprising here to see that vicelia, of course, is, gets the lion's share of the, of the activity of recording as well as the unincorporated So challenges going forward, staffing, staffing's a big one, we're running at roughly ten percent vacancy, I doubt if that's all that different from many of the departments, but with twenty-seven percent of our staff being over fifty, we're going to have a second round, second wave of retirements after the boomer wave, and so it presents issues, it presents staffing and logistical administrative problems, we, we've all talked about the millennial issues, we have, we're certainly not immune from that. Unfortunately, the turnover generally always involves the more technical side of it, you train, we have appraisers, we have certified staff, we have the title and administrative techs that become experts in, in, in trusts and determining transfers of ownership, and they always have options. And so those are the ones that take a while, certainly to train, and those are the ones that we hate seeing go, and so we're always working, we hope to be working with HR going forward with some reclassifications and reorganizations. Mentioned the split role a little earlier, so, very briefly, we don't, we don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, very briefly, two thousand seventeen, there was a group of people that got a ballot measure prepared, it was ready to go for the, the two thousand eighteen, November eighteen ballot, it was pulled because they were running into considerable amount of, of headwind, people not necessarily in favor of it, it's a, it's, now they're back getting signatures for a second, that's the revised initiative portion that you see there, the nineteen version. What it's going to do, if it comes to fruition, will separate commercial and industrial properties from Prop thirteen protection, and so it would set up the reappraisal of cyclically reappraising commercial and industrial properties instead of applying Prop thirteen protection. So, it has nothing to do with the Prop thirteen ballot measure that's on for March, so don't confuse that, that, it, that's just a run-of-the-mill fifteen billion dollar school funding thing. It just happened to have drawn the Prop thirteen numbering sequence, so it, a lot of people are thinking that's the Prop thirteen bill, it is not. November of twenty is when we're probably going to see the split role initiative, I don't have its, its fancy name, of course, it has something to do with schools and education and affordable housing and all those catchwords that tend to get put on those ballot measures. Split role impacts, there's, the new version, the two thousand seventeen version did not have any startup funding, this one provides for startup funding, but it's, it states that it must be repaid to the state's general fund, although it's nebulous as to who repays it and how. The two thousand, it, it provides for some annual funding for administrative costs, effective dates are a, a key issue, we're predicting significant cost to administer. We currently have four commercial appraisers and a supervisor. If we are required now to then go around and reappraise all commercial industrial properties, we estimate we're going to need twenty appraisers, we're going to have to kick that up by fourfold. We're going to have to kick that up by fourfold because of the sheer volume of the commercial industrial work that would be out there that would have to be done. So, the, we feel that it's going to be definitely an increase in assessment appeals because of this. Revenue volatility, we're not sure, they claim that it'll be less volatile, but we're not sure about that. And it's just a logistical nightmare. There are so many qualifications and conditions built into this thing that it's almost, we would have to go out and appraise a piece of property to determine whether it falls under the de minimis portion or not. We don't have physical space for the people that we're going to need to hire, so that's something we're going to have to work with, with the county, is finding desk space for these additional staffing that we'd have to bring up.
I suggest we put off the demolition of the main jail facility.
You know, it might work. There's a penthouse suite, there's a penthouse office on that building.
Perfect for you.
Technical advances, always, always part of the issue, especially currently now, we've got an issue going on with a company that we signed on with, what, six years ago? It seems to be a dumpster fire down in Riverside. Not quite as bad in Inyo, they've done something with that same company, but not good. We haven't gotten any further, any closer really, to a new system, so that's always a problem. Facilities, I mentioned earlier, you know, we would love to get out of the courthouse. We thought we had a shot at the old Kmart building, got edged out by other priorities. I guarantee you, Cass and I and everybody would love to have some space out of the courthouse with adequate space for future, future needs. So we talked about property system. We are in the process of converting from AutoCAD to GIS, got staff working with Reed's crew. RMA has been great, we're coordinating work with them. Digital imaging, it's a big deal. We've got three full-time staff imaging all documents that come in now, but we have a backlog. We have all the old records, existing current property records and retired records. We estimate about a million copies need to get scanned, so we've got to be working and doing something with that. We've seen what happens during a disaster, a catastrophe, port of a library, probably the documents that were lost in that fire, that will be, they're just irretrievable, they're gone forever. Electronic recording, I mentioned that, we're doing very well with that. Continuing that, hoping to increase that. Gets a little more difficult, Department of Justice gets a little more particular, all the, all the recording document stations, users have to be cleared and screened by the DOJ. Restructuring, I mentioned something about that, but we're, hope to be working with HR, CAO, on a variety of things regarding administrative and staffing. Tim, do you have anything? Before I turn to the next Q and A and let you people, I'm standing between you and lunch probably, do you have anything? Did I leave anything out? Do you want to, sure? I know I did. Do you have any questions? Any concerns?
That was an incredibly thorough presentation, not quite as exciting as I would have expected from Roland Hill, but I will turn to my colleague, Supervisor Crocker-
You know why? Because there's some new equipment here that even an idiot like me can use. It's amazing.
Remote controls are an old man's best friend, I get it, Roland. Go ahead Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you Roland for the presentation. I think it's always a pleasure to have you present to us.
And it's always a pleasure being here, sir.
Oh, you're just, now you're just adding on. I appreciate the fact that you verified that the Prop 13 ballot initiative that's on this March ballot is a statewide school bond and not the split role decision-
Correct.
Because there's a lot of confusion.
A lot of confusion. I've spoken to the two, two rotaries just within the last month, they all thought that this was the Prop 13 thing.
And so I appreciate that, and there's, I think there's, individuals have very valid points to be opposed to a statewide school bond, but I think it's just important to recognize what exactly you're voting on.
Right.
This is a school bond versus the split role, which I adamantly oppose the split role initiative. I want to ask about the split role, if you have seen anything, you mentioned, there wasn't any talk in there, I've heard there's confusion about ag properties. Are those exempt from the proposed split role or what?
I'm going to bring TK up because he's much more versed in split role, but I will point out, just yesterday I read an article that was sent out, and it's by the State Farm Bureau.
Right.
And you may have seen the same thing. No, they're contending the State Farm Bureau against the split role for the fact that it's going to include agricultural commercially-related industrial stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
So like packing houses, storage units, those types would be a part of the split role?
Exactly, is that right, Tim?
That is correct. So the language specifically calls out commercial growing operations, but it doesn't deal with the actual other end of that, be it packing houses and others. So there's some potential it could include that moving forward.
Thank you. Also, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your leadership in lowering our taxes last year as far as by increasing the-
By the de minimis, yeah.
And I know you didn't include that here, but I think that's important to note that you've made that effort, as well as I would be very supportive of looking at expanding and opening up Williamson Act for new contracts as well to explore that in the near future. I think those are two great things to help lower taxes.
It's easy for us to say, "All we do is value it." Reed's crew's the one that have to process all the contracts and do all the heavy work. He's probably thinking, "No, no, we don't want to do that." He'll squirm a little bit. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Mr. CAO?
Quick question, Roland. Just going back to the split role, I think it's important for people to hear that, so my understanding is there's already a shortage of certified appraisers in the state. So is the State Board of Equalization doing anything about that in case split role passes?
None that we're aware of.
Unfortunately, the state board's bearing up under the weight of their own organizational issues after they were split off with the State Department of Tax.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, they're struggling to even find trainers to bring on to get some of the advanced coursework that would permit people to do some evaluation on this. So even if we could bring them on, training them may be a difficulty as we move forward with it.
Definitely, there will be a shortage of commercial appraisers. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you Roland, that was a highly anticipated presentation, and I'm glad that you brought someone wiser than yourself, Tim, who put together the presentation for his older boss. So that was very nice.
I would have done much better if I had not fallen asleep for the last two hours. I apologize.
Thank you for coming in, but thank you, but really I do appreciate you giving a presentation to the board. I know one of the things that I wanted to make sure we did this year was have every department come before the Board of Supervisors, giving an update and talking about some high-level issues.
We figured you were to blame.
Yeah, but I just find it to be helpful and I give you a chance to come out of the dungeon every once in a while.
I love it, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, I'll see you at Retirement Board meeting tomorrow.
I thought I heard you weren't going to be there.
I will be there, just because you've gotten me all pumped up now. Next, we'll take up item 23, which is a presentation given by the County Administrative Office regarding an update on the 2020 census complete count outreach. Mr. CAO, do you want to give an introduction or are you?
Alex.
Okay. All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members, CAO, and Counsel. Alexandra Cruz, Admin Analyst at the County Administrative Office, and I'm here to give you an update on the county's census outreach efforts. For background, on January 29, 2019, your board adopted a resolution to participate in the 2020 Census-County Opt-In Agreement with the state, and returned March 26, 2019 to your board to approve the state funding grant agreement. For both the 2000 and 2010 census, the county utilized TCAG as the lead agency for the formation of the committee and conducting census outreach. For the 2020 census, TCAG was approached by the county again to be the lead agency. On April 9, 2019, an agreement was executed between the county and TCAG to implement the census outreach grant. I would like to introduce to you from TCAG Barbara Pilligard and Roberto Brady to give you an update on the census outreach efforts.
Good afternoon Supervisors. Yes, it's been a pleasure to work with Alex and the CAO on this project. I'll just go through a couple of slides and introduce Barbara. This slide is from, is a screenshot from the state's hard-to-count index map, and I'm just showing this so you can see that the darker red areas have the highest hard-to-count index, and they are located all over the valley portion of the county. And so the outreach that we are doing goes throughout the county. And you can see, you have a lot of index numbers which are very close to each other. I don't recall the average hard-to-count index in the state, but these are all much higher than that. I put in this slide to emphasize some of the key dates. It's a little lame, but it's my fault, I did the slide. In your agenda item, there's a list of key dates which is more informative, but you can see that beginning now in March, there will be waves of notices to all populations to participate in the census. Census Day officially is April 1, and kind of the basis for the count is where you are living on April 1. And then in, through April, there will be reminders, and then after April, we evolve into a final stage which is called non-response follow-up. That's done really by the census. Our part is done basically by then, although we do do some reporting, I believe. And this is just also in your agenda item, and there will be three ways to respond to the US Census, online, by phone, and by mail. I know that this is the first time that people are able to respond online, and the Census Bureau is emphasizing that. And phone is still available, as said, in thirteen languages. I'm sorry for choosing the orange color, I think that was part of the California census logo. I thought it'd be clever, but it's a little hard to read. Wanted to turn it over to Barbara Pilligard now, we're fortunate to have Barbara, and she worked on census outreach in 2000 and 2010. And of course, this time around, there's a lot more funding, there's even higher stakes, and she's done a tremendous amount of work. So I'll hand it over to Barbara.
Sure. With regards to the three options, but is there a push to get everyone to do the online or is it pretty much equal across? Because I heard that there's been a push to try to get people to fill them out online as opposed to phone or hard copy.
My understanding is also there is a push to try to make the predominant vehicle the online access to the census, and Barbara can go into a little more if she likes, but one component is the funding of questionnaire assistance centers and questionnaire assistance kiosks, which are basically, people can come and use a secure internet connection to fill out the, excuse me, the census online. A questionnaire assistance center would include staff to help people, but not fill it out for them, but to answer questions and assist them. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, they are hoping that most people will respond online, but people can respond by phone or request it in mail. In fact, they're, the Census Bureau has a couple of different mailing strategies where they feel that there's the greater probability of online access, they're just sending out a card in the mail and not the paper form, and people will have a number that they'll enter in when they go online. Now they said if people get, end up not getting one of the cards in the mails or have lost their card, threw it out, that they can still go online and enter in their address and be able to take the census. People can also call in by phone, and they'll have people there that can assist them in various languages, and they can also request a paper form. In some of our county areas, they'll be actually sending a paper form out along with the card, and these are in areas where they have judged that there's less chance of having the online access. So some people in our county will be getting both the card inviting people to go online as well as the paper form. And if people don't respond, then they'll all get a paper form. Oh, this is the fun stuff. So this is a Tulare County Fair, and what we're doing, well, that's me, and we did a kids' craft project. We have a craft sheet, and it has, you know, I count Yo'Quinto with the census logo, and we trace kids' hands. And then we line it with glue, sprinkle it with glitter, and you can see we get a lot of people that come to the table. And while we're working on the project, and we're talking with the parents, and we're talking with the kids, and sometimes it's really fun, we had a kid come up to us, and Lindsay, when we were at Kids' Day, and he says, and I asked, "Have you heard about the census?" And he says, "Oh yeah, I've heard about the census, we talked about it in school." I said, "Well, what did you find out?" "Oh," he said, "well, it's the census, it hear, see, smell, taste, touch." So we had to talk about, you know, different kind of senses, but no. We've been to as many events as we can, and a whole new, now that it's spring, there are more things to go to. This was out at a powwow at Tulie River Indian Tribe, and I loved the way Angel did the glitter. And so you can see how we do it, but it attracts the people and their parents to the booth. This is more at the powwow, there's myself, my daughter, all my children have spent time now in the census booth. It's not exactly like Toy Story III where it's, you know, in the box, but we've been enjoying it. Now this is one of our partners, Sedella Hernandez, from the Woodlake Family Resource Center. And so she's holding one of the little know-your-rights cards, and of course has the Cookie Monster out there. So they were doing the kids' craft project. We've had many partners working with us who have incorporated census outreach among all their events. And in fact, on the Farm Worker Festival that was in Porterville on the 14th, Proteus was out there with census information. At the Black History Month event at Edison, Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber was out there with census information, and then Gil called me yesterday and said there was, the Census Bureau job recruiters were there too. We had census cards handed out to the people at the Pixley Park, where the middle school was doing their community service day last weekend in the almost rain, but I mean, it was a good day. But, so these little cards, we've printed up now about 230,000 of them, and we got them out to most of the schools. We've been working closely with the Office of Education. And when Rob Herman first told me, he says, "Oh, you better order 150." I thought, "Oh my goodness, you know, that's a lot of cards." But we've had to reorder since then. So we had, Visalia Unified took about 20,000 cards just in and of themselves. So, we had, by, by Celia Unified took about twenty thousand cards just in and of themselves. So, we've been giving these out, I don't know if you want to, you could pass. We've had other census groups ask for the digital file for these cards. This was something sort of modeled after the know your rights immigration cards that Civic picks out, which is one of the reasons we have Civic's logo on it along with Univision and LULAC. So, we give these out to people and it, it provides an overview of what kind of questions will be on this census. It tells them how to tell a fake numerator from a real one where they can call to double check. Talks about how the, getting a complete count is important for all the funding programs like Medi-Cal, CHIP SNAP, the school lunch, school breakfast program, Title I funding for school Head Start. And so, when we've talked to people, they've really connected with that and these little cards, they tech them in their wallet or tech them in their purse and we don't find them on the ground later, which is good. But we've been to as many events. Roberto mentioned our questionnaire assistance centers. We have about fifty-one locations where there'll be questionnaire assistance. Most of them are through, we're partnering with Office of Education. They're, they offer, they've set up locations where they're providing a fifteen hundred dollar stipend so that the school can pay their staff for the extra hours to have the center open. And then we're, our funding, we're using to, for them to help purchase the tablets or they've got privacy screens or if they've got auto theft, I'm, no, anti-theft, not auto theft, anti-theft devices to help the tablets from not walking off by themselves. So, most of them are, we've got locations at various schools throughout the county and then all the Tulare County Library Branch Libraries and the City of Tulare Public Library. So, there's, there, we have lots of locations with that. We've printed up ten thousand census bags that have already gone out. We've given them, we've been distributing them through Food, Food Link and then all our partners that are, that come to the Complete Count Committee meetings and have events, then they'll take the, the bags or we've had census pencils and we're working on it. We've just sent to print census children's color books, Love Crenns, we're partnering with First Five and their eighteen agencies to try to get the word out through them. We also have, we support the census, the census supports us posters and we've had our partners, we've got about thirty-six logos on that poster, which was kind of a hard fit, but it was to show, look, you know.
Working together.
Yeah, it affects, it affects the organizations and the community, places that you go every day. So, those will be coming out soon. We're working on the media component. We've just got the purchase order approved for, with Univision. And then we've got some radio stations, Campesina, La Le, KJAG. Used to, let's see, it used to be, oh, it's Lot, Laser, used to be La Machina, but we're, we're working on our media component. So, we're trying to get the rest of the money spent as quickly as we can. We made, we, we did, went through a mini-grant process that the TCAG Board allowed us to develop in September. We received applications and, and we're currently have our draft contracts out for roughly a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars working with various agencies. So, we're, we're going as fast as we can. Right now, it seems like everything else would be done all at once. But, any questions? Let me see if I have any more pictures. Oh, this was Lindsay's Kid Day.
Any questions from Board Members about the census?
Porterville.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation, Barbara.
Okay.
Appreciate all of your effort and making sure that everybody's counted, it's very important.
Thank you.
Okay, now that'll take us to item twenty-four. This is Board Matter Request. This time, Board Members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business be considered for a future agenda. Any such requests, Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to formalize from earlier, from Roland's presentation, I'd like to have some type of discussion, look at new Williamson Act contracts and what that would look like and the process and have that come back before the board. Also, something that was talked about months ago at the NACO Annual Conference, I think that there's a need is for some type of branding guidelines and, you know, how departments utilize logos and making sure that we have some type of consistency across the board and making sure that we're, have similar type messaging. I, I know that there's a lot of good work going on, but having consistency in messaging, I think, helps, helps the greater community recognize that we're all one big family. And this isn't necessarily a request or, or a request for a future item, but I just think that, that we need to have some mechanism to track some of these requests. I know that the noise ordinance was brought up in Ivanhoe, we still haven't seen that. There's been other requests that have come up and just making sure that we're following up and making sure that we are getting these agendized and, and discussing them. Thank you.
We do, Mr. Chairman. Items A and B are off calendar. The remainder will be heard in closed session. I do not expect any announcements out, but I do expect Supervisor Shecklian would like to speak.
I would like to speak. I have a financial conflict of interest under Government Code Section eight seven one zero zero regarding closed session, item E. I will not attend the closed session for item E and will not obtain or review any non-public information regarding the governmental decision. Clerk, if you, I'm requesting that you make this announcement part of the official record of today's meeting. Thank you. I can eat pizza.
Any other typed requests?